Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Petaluma City Council and Petaluma Community Development Successor Agency for Monday, June 17, 2024. If you wish to provide a public comment on tonight's agenda, please fill out a speaker card from the back of the chamber and bring it to our city clerk. And I will now invite Monica Aparicio and Maria Galvez to provide information to those who wish to participate in Spanish.
Thank you. Good evening. Hola, me llamo Maria Galvez y estoy con mi compañera de interpretación, Monica Aparicio. Estamos hoy aquí como intérpretes. Este evento se llevará a cabo en español e inglés. Se usarán ambos idiomas activamente, así que usted podrá elegir un canal para participar en su idioma preferido después de que le hayamos explicado cómo funciona la interpretación. Si usted está conectado con su computadora, usted verá un icono de un mundo. I'm sorry. Usted verá el icono de un mundo en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Si usted está conectado con su tableta o teléfono, pulse en más y verá un menú que incluye la opción de interpretación de idiomas. Para escuchar la interpretación, por favor, pulse el icono del mundo o interpretación de idiomas. A continuación, elija su canal de idioma. Thank you.
And thank you. May we have our roll call for the evening?
Barnacle?
Present.
Kater Thompson?
Here.
Healy?
Here.
Now, absent. Posake?
Here.
Shribs?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Let's stand and have a pledge of allegiance. In a moment of silence. Moving into tonight's agenda, first to check if we have any changes or deletions. Looking up and down the dais here, and we do not, so we will be following the agenda as printed. And we are now moving to our proclamation, which is always one of the fun parts of our evening. I'd like to invite Faith Ross of the Petaluma Blacks for the Community Development to come forward to the podium for us. And tonight, we have a City of Petaluma proclamation for Juneteenth, June 19, 2024. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1863, declaring the slaves in the Confederate territory free, pacing the way for the passage of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas word about signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed some two and one-half years to June 19, 1865, in reaching authorities and African-Americans in the South and Southwest United States. And whereas Emancipation Day observances are held on different days in different states in the South and Southwest and in other parts of the nation. And whereas June 19 has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words of June and 19, and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. And whereas Juneteenth marks our country's second Independence Day, and historical legacy shows the value of never giving up hope in uncertain times. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Kevin McDonald, Mayor of the City of Petaluma, along with members of the Petaluma City Council, do hereby declare June 19, 2024, as Juneteenth in the City of Petaluma, California, and urge all residents to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city. Thank you. If you'd like to say a few words.
Yes. To the mayor, city council, and other city officials, on behalf of Petaluma Blacks for Community Development, I accept this proclamation in honor of Juneteenth. Juneteenth, meaning June, and the 19th day. Juneteenth is now a national holiday celebrating when the slaves in Texas were told they were free on June 19, 1865, in Gabistin, Texas. The Emancipation Proclamation was issued on January 1, 1863, and only applied to former Confederate states. There remain legally enslaved people in states that never succeeded from the Union. They were freed through the 13th Amendment to the United States Constitution on December 6, 1865. We accept this and appreciate it. I wanted to let you know the person who started Juneteenth in Sonoma County, Mrs. Montel Perry. She's a lady that has passed away, but a person that I met when I was the when I worked at the World Savings Branch in Santa Rosa. She was one of my customers there, and she would come in. And she talked a lot about her family, her faith, and the things that she was involved in. And one of the things that she did, because she was from Texas, she brought this tradition to Sonoma County back in the 50s. And so we celebrate now in Santa Rosa with the rest of the county. We don't have a separate program or event for that. But she was one of those people who was so caring and so faithful in the things that she did. And I thought it important for us to remember that. She was the one who started this in 1950 here in Sonoma County. And thank you again. Can the people from PBCB stand up, please? And we have some of the group from API also here joining us in this proclamation.
Thank you very much. And now I think we'll move right into our presentation for the evening, which is about the Caulfield Bridge with an update. And here to help us is Bjorn Griepenberg, the project manager. Take it away, Bjorn.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, council members and community members. My name is Bjorn Griepenberg. I'm a project manager with our Public Works and Utilities Project. And tonight, I am also joined online by Zach Zaviglia and Jason Hickey of Mark Thomas. They're our design consultant for this project, as well as Staleen Whitlock from W Trans, who is serving as the lead on all things traffic and circulation for the project. And with that, I will jump right in. So tonight, I'm very excited to bring our first update to city council since May of 2023 on this very exciting project. And tonight, really what we're going to do is give a very, very high-level, brief overview, an update on our scope, schedule, and budget, talk about what we've heard in our community engagement efforts thus far. Then we'll hone in on a few key topics that are really driving this project. And then we'll wrap up with a community engagement plan, which will also double as our next steps. So the vision for the Caulfield Lane Extension and Bridge dates back to the early 2000s. It was included as one of two new proposed crosstown connectors in the city's current general plan, General Plan 2025. And in addition to improving crosstown mobility, the bridge would serve, as you see in the image here, several recent and planned developments in the area. And as you see in the aerial map there, the roadway network in this area, which has all been constructed in recent years through development projects, was done in anticipation of a bridge someday being built at this site. You can see the roadway network on the north side of the river there in the Riverfront Neighborhood, aligning with the Crystal Lane Roundabout on the south side that was built through the Quarry Heights Development. And efforts to bring this project to shovel-ready status ramped up, again, starting last May, when you, the city council, approved a resolution authorizing our city manager to execute an agreement with Mark Thomas to complete environmental review permitting and design to bring this project to shovel-ready status. As illustrated by our scope and schedule, this is a very complex project with a lot of moving pieces. It's complex in terms of both the design, obviously, being a movable bridge, but also complex in terms of regulatory approvals. We're working with several different agencies, including the U.S. Coast Guard, California Public Utilities Commission, State Lands Commission. And this will be a project that is the environmental review documents for this project will be done through both the California Environmental Quality Act and the National Environmental Protection Act. And our target is to have this project bid ready by late 2025 to early 2026. And I don't expect folks in the audience to be able to see this slide in detail, but this is the table from our recently adopted fiscal year 2024-25 budget book. And here, I just want to highlight a couple of key developments since we last updated you on the cost estimate back in October of 2022. Construction of the bridge itself accounts for roughly $46.7 million of the $56.7 million construction costs that you see in row three. And the remaining $10 million of that accounts for the extension of Caulfield Lane from Hopper Street down into the Riverfront Neighborhood. And I'll talk about some of those adjacent improvements shortly that would facilitate that Caulfield Lane Extension. And in row five, you will also see we've got a 20% contingency for this project for both the bridge and those adjacent roadway and intersection improvements. And as always with these cost estimates, they're subject to additional refinement as we advance in the design phase and learn more about the project and all of its nuances. On the funding side, which is that second part of the table down below, you'll see a sizable amount shown in Undetermined Funds. And our hope here is that getting this project to shovel-ready status will make the project more competitive for grant funding. We're in close coordination with our partners at the Sonoma County Transportation Authority. They're obviously very well aware of this project, and we're both keeping an eye out for potential funding opportunities in the pipeline. And we have also submitted this project for consideration in the Metropolitan Transportation Commission's Regional Transportation Plan, which is known as Plan Bay Area 2050, or I think the next update will be Plan Bay Area 2050 Plus. So inclusion in that plan could also improve the project's funding competitiveness. We launched community engagement efforts on this project back in October of last year. And we started off with a very well-attended open house at the community center, paired with an online survey. And since then, we've also presented this project to our pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee for their input. And just a couple of weeks ago, held a neighborhood meeting with folks in the Riverfront Neighborhood. These are some high-level findings and themes. We've gotten a lot of great input thus far. We've heard a lot of great ideas. People are really excited about, especially about providing input on the bridge design and amenities, which we'll be touching on later this evening. But understandably, we've also heard lots of concerns about the impacts that the bridge could have, especially for folks in the Riverfront Neighborhood. And so we're still obviously very early in the design process. And our goal in engaging the community at this early stage is to get all of those ideas and concerns out. And then hopefully, we can really work to address those and incorporate those ideas as we get further along with our design and hopefully address the concerns through thoughtful design. So as I noted, understandably, we've heard a lot of we've gotten a lot of comments and questions about, not necessarily about the bridge itself, but about the traffic conditions that would result from the bridge's construction. And so we're looking very closely at modifications, especially to the ingress and the access and egress for the Riverfront Neighborhood, looking at that stretch between the North Bank and the Lakeville-Caulfield intersection, and looking at all of the traffic calming and other safety and circulation improvements that we need to deliver as part of this project before the bridge is operational. So we are preparing a traffic study. We're required to prepare a traffic study as part of our environmental document. But like I just said, we're looking very closely at transportation, at all these other circulation improvements beyond just what's required in the traffic study. Our study, as always, uses the Sonoma County Transportation Authority's model. And we use 2040 conditions. The point there is that we are incorporating all expected build-out between now and 2040 and even beyond really what the model assumes is nearly full build-out of whatever land uses are in our general plan. So it's safe to say that any models would likely overestimate traffic impacts, but we do that for a reason. Our initial model runs suggest the project will decrease vehicle miles traveled citywide, and that's to be expected, given that this bridge, you know, one of the primary benefits is that it shortens trips that people are already making using more circuitous routes on D Street and US 101, most notably. And we expect that the primary congestion reduction benefit would be over the D Street drop bridge. Level of service is a measure that is used to analyze intersection delay. And it used to be something that we needed to analyze as part of our environmental study. That is no longer the case in California. But we are looking at level of service regardless at several signalized intersections around the project area. And based on what we know thus far in previous model runs, the only intersection where we would expect intersection delay to degrade would be at the Lakeville Highway and Caulfield Intersection, which is to be expected, you're introducing quite a bit of new traffic at that signalized intersection, which currently primarily serves Lakeville Highway. So we're looking very closely at that intersection in particular, and I'll touch on that more shortly. Through conversations with our police and fire departments, we estimate that emergency response times would be reduced by up to 50% through this project. And one of the key findings there is that our D Street Fire Station and our South McDowell Fire Stations work very closely together and often respond to calls in each other's service areas. And so that's a real benefit of this project is improving their ability to collaborate and serve each other's areas. And lastly, we do expect this bridge to be utilized for some new crosstown transit service and especially improving transit operations between Southwest Petaluma and the Lakeville Corridor. So now I'll just walk through some of those additional circulation and roadway improvements that we are looking at as part of this project. And you'll see numbers pop up that correspond with each of these slides. So first off, I mentioned the Caulfield-Lakeville Intersection, where we expect level of service, meaning intersection delay, to degrade. And so there are several things we can do there through lane reassignment, signal phasing changes, and potentially even adding some capacity to that intersection that would help mitigate those impacts. Secondly, we are looking at the possibility of northbound traffic queuing back towards the Smart tracks when folks on Caulfield have a red light. And so some detection on Caulfield just north of the tracks would help with signal preemption so that we can clear that queue in order to avoid the train tracks being blocked. Third, we know we will need to redesign the Caulfield-Hopper intersection that will be subject to California Public Utilities Commission approval and will require close coordination with Smart, given that it is an at-grade rail crossing. Signal or roundabout seem like the likely options there that we would need to provide. And then we are looking at the, obviously, at an extension to Caulfield Lane through the city's property that would link up with the existing roadway network and help improve that flow of traffic through this area. Moving just towards the river a little bit here, we see some issues or opportunities for improvement, I should say, with the central green area. It's currently serving, you know, it's kind of a hybrid between a roundabout and where you would expect traffic to yield, but it currently has stop signs. So we're looking very closely at opportunities to further enhance that central green or modify the central green, I should say, to improve traffic flow and safety once increased levels of traffic are in place. And one of the ideas, we'll get into this further in our design process and come back to the community with something that's a little bit more fully baked. But one of the ideas that has arisen, here, I'll use my pointer here to kind of illustrate this if I can get my cursor on the right, there we go, is the idea of a one-way couplet where northbound traffic would flow around the central green and up towards Hopper Street, and then make that right onto Caulfield. And southbound traffic would primarily be entering the green via the Caulfield Lane Extension and then coming around the green this way. And that way, you avoid that overlapping conflict between the two directions of traffic. And frankly, Hopper Street is very narrow up along the train tracks. So that's another possible benefit. We'll be looking very closely at the intersection operations and driveways that side onto Caulfield Lane. Right now, you have a handful of stop-controlled side streets, and then Caulfield Lane is free-flowing. There are no stop signs until you get to the central green. So we'll be looking very closely at the gaps in traffic during peak conditions and figuring out what the best treatment would be to ensure that people who live off of Caulfield Lane can make those left turns onto and off of Caulfield during busy times. And then lastly, we are coordinating very closely right now with Petaluma River Place to ensure that all of their frontage improvements there on Caulfield, south of the river, are compatible with our bridge design. And they've been great to work with. We're looking obviously very closely at all of the active transportation connectivity. This new connection would really enable a lot of new trips made by foot and bike. It's currently a roughly three-mile detour using city streets if you wanted to cross the river at this location, I should say. So we're looking very closely at the opportunities to integrate this with the existing and planned active transportation network, which most notably includes an existing and planned sections of the Petaluma River Trail along the entirety of the river and linking up to the River Park. And then lastly, this is a recent development. We are exploring the possibility of leveraging the excavation that will be done for the bridge abutments to possibly deliver some cost savings where we could bore underneath the river and provide a recycled water, a cross-river recycled water connection. And you can see the existing recycled water mains that were installed on Fairgrounds Drive and at Quarry Heights. And so once you figure out how to get across the river, it becomes much easier to envision a recycled water connection up to Quarry Heights and the Petaluma Country Club, which is one of our top potable water users. So next up, I will hand it off to Zach and Jason, who are joining us on Zoom. They are the bridge gurus, and they're going to talk us through all of the wonky engineering stuff related to the bridge design and also some really exciting stuff on the bridge amenities.
Perfect. Thanks, Bjorn. Well, good evening. Glad to be back with you again to talk about this project. Bjorn, if you want to go to the next slide. As Bjorn mentioned, we've been looking at a lot of the technical aspects of the project just to get to a point where we can define what the project's going to be and then start working towards how we go through the environmental clearances and ultimately towards a final design. To start off, we have had coordination with the U.S. Coast Guard. They have given us a determination that, from a navigation perspective, we need to maintain 90-foot horizontal clearance along Petaluma River. And we also need to maintain 70-foot of vertical clearance when the bridge is in the open position. Some other design aspects that we're working towards are obviously minimizing impacts on the water surface elevation. The Petaluma River is a very active floodplain, so there's been a lot of work involved there to make sure that there's no impacts from the water surface elevation standpoint. We are also working on the traffic analysis, not just when the bridge is in the closed condition, but when the bridge does need to open to allow boats along the river to go through. We want to make sure that that queue doesn't spill back and block the roundabout along Petaluma Boulevard. In addition to that, we are also providing undercrossing for the trails along the North Bank of the Petaluma River as well. And through all of this, we want to make sure that we identify the most cost-effective movable bridge solution that meets the criteria above, as well as the community's perspective on the project. Next slide. Luckily for this project, there are four major movable bridge types. All four movable bridge types technically are feasible for this project, given the span lengths that we have. So what's shown on this slide, going from top to bottom, are the four main types of movable bridges. The top one being a vertical lift bridge. This is a bridge that goes up and down when it needs to open. The second one shown in green is a swing bridge or swivel. This is where the bridge rotates around a center pier in the river. And then we have two bascule bridge types that open from a pivot point on the shore. So we have, what's shown in orange, is a double-leaf bascule, meaning both sides of the bridge open. And the bottom one is a single-leaf bascule, which means only one side of the bridge opens. Given the requirement from the U.S. Coast Guard to have a 90-foot opening, we have all four movable bridge types that we could have chosen for this project. Next slide. One of the things that influenced the design of the bridge significantly was the hydraulics within the river itself. Looking at wanting to maintain no water surface elevation impacts within the floodplain, we worked very closely with the hydraulics team to ultimately design and optimize the piers that are going to be placed in the river. And with the bridge design that I'll show in another slide, we were able to minimize the impacts from a water surface elevation standpoint. So we were able to align the piers so that there was very little impact. What's shown here is a two-dimensional model. So what's identified as a three-inch rise in the water surface elevation only occurs at the very upstream nose of the pier, but then it quickly dissipates as you work up and away from the pier in the river. This is one thing that influenced the bascule bridge. A swivel bridge would have had a much larger impact in the water surface elevation, which is why we ultimately decided that that was not going to be a feasible solution for this project. Next slide. So what's being selected for the bridge type is a single-leaf bascule bridge. The movable bridge span itself is going to be roughly about 154 feet opening. The total bridge length from one bank to the other is roughly around 317 feet, and there's multiple spans in there. If I start on the left side of the screen and work my way to the right, the first span is where we cross over the bike path that will go underneath the bridge along the bank of the river. We then have the main movable bridge span itself in the pivot pier. And again, that opening is about 154 feet. And then on the far-right side of the screen, we have a fixed span that will be used just to span the last 80 feet of the river. Next slide. This is what the bridge would look like from a plan view perspective, just looking just down from a bird's-eye view. Again, we have Caulfield on the left side of the screen. The bridge would open towards Batista Way. And then on the right side of the screen, as you work towards Petaluma Boulevard, eventually that's where it transitions to that fixed span going towards the roundabout. Next slide. Zooming in a little closer, this is showing a cross-section of the bridge. What's being proposed is, on the outside of the bridge, having two 10-foot multi-use paths that would be separated from vehicle traffic with barriers. And then that separated barrier is vehicle-rated. On the bridge deck itself, where vehicles are traveling, there'd be two 11-foot lanes and four-foot shoulders or Class II bikeways. The cross-section is flexible. If we wanted to go with 10-foot lanes and five-foot shoulders on the bridge deck, all of that is perfectly fine. The idea being that we want to provide multiple opportunities for cyclists that are comfortable riding in traffic, but then also have a separated portion for people that are not as comfortable riding with traffic where they have a multi-path on the side of the bridge. Next slide. So getting into some of the amenities, as Bjorn mentioned earlier, we have been working with the community, and there is a lot of opportunity with the project. Just during a recent meeting, we had the opportunity to talk about some of these design ideas. Just during a recent meeting, we had the opportunity to talk about some of these design ideas. So just starting off with community feedback that we've heard to date, wanting to make sure that we provide opportunities for people to engage with, with the river itself. It is a great amenity. So what's shown here are just other opportunities for people to get down to the river just by different piers and docks on both sides of the water. In addition, along the north bank of the river, we would be providing enhanced enhancements along the bike path. This would be with trail lighting, different types of wayfinding signs, different planting and other features that could be provided. As we go over on to the right side of the screen, again, there's other opportunities that we can look at exploring, not just with landscaping, but one of the things that we've heard a lot is wanting to incorporate different times, different types of public art with the project. Next slide. So what we're going to show here is just a series of different alternatives and options that we've identified that we'll start working towards as we go to complete the final designs of the project, working with the community. So this just shows a myriad of different options, from lighting opportunities, from bridge bank treatments with different types of rock slope treatment, from pedestrian and bicycle amenities, rails and fencing alternatives that we have, looking at different activity centers, like I mentioned, ways to engage with the riverfront. And then on the next slide, one thing that we've heard a lot of is public art and providing an opportunity for maybe even kinetic art. So things, since we do have a movable, movable bridge, there would be opportunities for different types of kinetic art, maybe even with the bridge itself. So these are things that we're working with the community on to look at ways to incorporate this with the final bridge design. And then obviously the bridge color and the, the different treatments there as well, being a major element of the project. Next slide. All right, Bjorn, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Zach. Yeah, and so just, just to wrap up here with what we've done thus far, as far in terms of community engagement and upcoming opportunities for city council and the community to engage on this project. Up top, there is a highlight of, or a snapshot of what we have done thus far. We are also going to be working with the U.S. Coast Guard to release the public comment notice to river users very soon this summer. So they'll be, U.S. Coast Guard will be capturing all of their feedback. And then as we go into the environmental review stage, we anticipate releasing the draft environmental document for public comment and review later this year in the fall, hopefully. And then coming back for adoption and certification of that environmental document once we've had the opportunity to address and respond to all of those comments middle of next year, looking at spring 2025. And perhaps more exciting, later this year, we will be coming back to the community and city council with our first round of bridge renderings, where we're going to hopefully show people a, a design that, that really incorporates all of this great feedback we've heard to date and addresses, again, addresses the concerns we've heard through, through really thoughtful design. And that will include both the bridge design itself, but also all of our ideas around how we would like to or are suggest recommending addressing the new circulation conditions between Lakeville and the river. So that will be a two-part, two-part outreach. We'll go to the community first with another open house and survey. And then once we've addressed incorporated that feedback, we'll come back to city council for a, a deep dive. We'll do a workshop with you all, tell you what we've heard from the community and how our, our design has updated. And with that, happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. I should note to the public that this is an informational update, a presentation for, for the council and for the public. And I'm going to bring it up here to council to see if they have any questions of staff. But if the public wishes to ask a question on this, we have general public comment following this item. And your item, your questions or, or your comments on this are merged with just general items that come up next. So with that, I'd like to bring it up to council and see if anyone would like to, if everyone would like to comment. And let's start with council member Kater Thompson.
I just have a quick question. When they did the smart bridge, I believe that was a used bridge they found and was able to purchase it and put it there. Is that a possibility?
Zach, you want to take that one?
Yeah, I will. Most likely not for this project because there are some unique aspects that we need to design for. As I mentioned, the pier in the river needs to be oriented in line with the river itself so that it minimizes the hydraulic impacts. So just those little intricate design aspects, most likely we're looking at a new bridge for this as opposed to trying to find something that specifically meets each one of the design parameters that we need.
Okay, I appreciate that, but I just still wanted to ask the question. No answer.
Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah, maybe for the folks in the audience, can you say what percentage of our potable water is used by the country club?
I do not have that data offhand. I'm looking to see if we can get that, we can get that to you.
Okay.
I can answer that.
Unless... I think we have an answer, may have an answer here, Councilmember Healy.
Yeah, so during the drought, it was about 3% of our summertime potable water usage at the country club.
Well, I'll just say that I appreciate the thoughtful, the thoughtful design for the Lakeville Caulfield intersection, for thinking about how we can get water over to the west side and for water resilience measures. And then, you know, obviously just, you know, a number of different considerations for the existing riverfront community. So full steam ahead, as far as I'm concerned. Does it look like by the end of 2025, we should have what seem, appear to be a shovel-ready project?
Yeah, that's the goal, late 2025, early 2026.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember Healy?
Yeah, just one thing briefly. I'm, I'm pleased to see the Caulfield extension shown there. But correct me if I'm wrong, that can't be built until the new forest main is built. Is that correct? Because that structure, that old sewer plant structure needs to be removed and we can't remove it until then. And what, when will that be?
So there are some, the, the PIPs project will dictate the roadway alignment, but the work does not necessarily need to wait until PIPs is complete, is my understanding. We're essentially able to part with a lot of the infrastructure on, I'll call it the, the west side of, of the former wastewater treatment plant. And then the more sensitive infrastructure that needs to be preserved is over on the east side of the, of the plant. So the, the idea was to basically circumvent the, the sensitive, critical infrastructure, things that are needed there at that site for, for backup or for resilience and, and find a roadway alignment that, that can actually skirt all of that infrastructure, provide that clearance and then, and still provide the connectivity that we're looking for.
So I know the pump building needs to remain because that will still be critical, but there's that other 1930s vintage concrete structure there. And already saying, in the past, I've been told that needs to remain until PIPs, the PIPs, new PIPs parallel main is built. Is that not the case anymore?
That was not my understanding. I could, we, we've been coordinating with the two project teams and we're trying to align our project schedules so that those two projects are in, are in close coordination. So we can, we'll, we'll definitely get back to you with it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Council, Vice Mayor Shribs?
Okay, just a couple of questions here. First, just about the, the pathway that's on the, I guess, the east side, east, northeast side. And we're going to have to give some space there. And there's a, is there enough space between the roadway from, as it's coming through and how that's going to rise up, when it's going to start rising up to, so that there is enough space on that pathway? Because I think you need what, at least 10 feet at that point? And the pathway is a little bit closer in. So will we still be able to get the full 10 feet? And so when does the road actually start, have to start rising in order to get that, that height?
So the roadway was actually already built up. The, the elevation was built there in anticipation of the bridge. That's why you have that hill basically at the end of Caulfield there on the north side. And the, the goal is to provide clearance. There's, Caltrans requires a minimum of eight feet vertical clearance for multi-use pathways. We're going to, we're going to try to exceed that eight feet because it, it does feel a little tight. So we're going to, we're going to, I think, try to, to maximize that space. We'll, we'll likely be reconstruct, we'll be reconstructing the trail underneath the bridge at that, at that location. But the bridge is being designed to, to meet at least the minimum eight-foot clearance.
So emergency vehicles could actually travel underneath that also if they had to go serve an accident down the trail?
You know, I'm not, I'm, I, that seems unlikely. Zach, do you have any thoughts on whether?
Yeah, not for emergency vehicles, but because Batista Way is directly adjacent to it, it's, it's not likely that they would need to have an emergency vehicle go directly underneath the bridge. And there would be, as Bjorn, Bjorn mentioned, there is just a slight reconstruction of the trail itself, where we're lowering the trail maybe one to two feet just to get underneath the bridge. The roadway itself was built to accommodate this structure. So there'd just be some minor reconstruction of the trail to get underneath that span.
Okay, then just going to dredging. In the past, we've been dredging 100-foot wide and the bridge is only 90-foot wide. So will that, will that be changing our whole plan for, for dredging? We're all down to 90-foot across the entire channel? Or is it just in that one spot? Or do we, will we dredge the whole 100-foot before and after?
Might be helpful for me to bring back up the exhibit with the, showing the elevation. Let me, let me do that really quickly. And I know, so Coast Guard takes Army Corps operations into account when they're, when they're dictating the navigational clearances. And that's something that they are engaged on. Let me just go back. Sorry, share my screen. Did you understand the question, Zach? Did you hear that about?
I did.
The width that is compared to the navigational channel?
The difference is the Coast Guard specifies the opening requirement at the bridge. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's the only portion that needs to be dredged. It's just that as a boat crosses underneath the bridge, there needs to be a minimum of 90-foot opening for navigation along the river itself. So it still is likely that the 100-foot width could be dredged for every location upstream and downstream of the bridge. We just have to maintain a minimum of 90-foot opening at the bridge itself.
Good. Then on, since you have a, a pillar there that, that is going to be in, in, especially in the water. So you've talked about water flow and it's not going to be impeding the water flow, but because we have sediment that's flowing with water, and we've seen many times that as soon as you put an impediment in, in water and flowing around it with lots of sand material, sediment tends to build up and build up into gravel, which turns into other things. And so it happens much quicker when you have something like that right in the center of the water. And so it is going to change a little bit of, not only the water path, maybe not significantly, but it's going, I suspect may have a significant impact on the sediment movement and sediment settling near and far around that. So are we looking at making sure, looking at these footprints, are we including sediment in analysis?
Yes, so when, when the pier is designed, there is a debris load that's applied to the bridge pier itself. And that could be sediment, it could be debris that's traveling down the river during high-flow events. So there is a debris load that's calculated in when we are designing the bridge. In this particular image that Bjorn has up on the screen, you can see how the pier itself was designed to be oriented in line with the flow along the river. And that's the benefits that we get with two-dimensional modeling now, is that we're able to better predict and model those effects. And there are details that we design in with these piers just in terms of the nose geometry, just to make sure that you minimize the hydraulic impact of the pier.
Right, so the hydraulic impact includes sediment movement.
So in terms of sedimentation?
Yes, sedimentation, both going past it and, and filling in behind it or in front of it, depending upon the tide coming through. So I would suspect when you're putting this in there, that sediment will build up the front and back of it.
Yeah, and I would say that's correct, that there's going to be a higher likelihood for sediment to, to accumulate around the pier. But that is part of our analysis when we're looking at designing the pier, is making sure that that's taken into effect with the pier design.
Right, so is there going to be a maintenance issue down the line that we have to remove some of that occasionally? Because when buildup comes up, then water flow gets impeded. And it's just like, it, it just gets worse and worse over time. I've seen this in creeks all the time. So is, is there, are we, we will have to think about maintaining the, the sediment load around the base of this bridge at, at some point in time other than just dredging every so often?
Yeah, I think the, the, the impacts of this pier are not going to be significant in terms of sedimentation along the river. I don't foresee this being a large maintenance effort by the city to maintain just the effects of the pier. I think it would be something that is combined with just overall efforts with dredging or other work along the river itself. The actual effects of the pier is not anticipated to be significant just given the ability that we have to design for those parameters now.
Okay, good. And then just bring up another concept that's been provided in the past by others, is that our, the upriver from that point upwards, we have River Park coming in, we have the basin dredging, whether or not the Army Corps will come in and continue to dredge down the road. And a couple of folks have suggested in the past, oh, maybe the best thing we can do is just allow it to go natural and start filling up naturally and forming its own way, which would mean, which would reduce some of the navigation of, of the river, which it did when, when we, like, right before we dredged, a lot of the navigation was reduced considerably. So basically here, you're basically on paddle boards and canoes. We were there for a couple of years and the basin almost down to, almost down to the way this bridge is. So I'm thinking 30, 50 years from now, if there is a decision that we don't get the dredging done because it's so costly. So how's that impact the navigability, quality of, of requirement of this bridge? And if, if there's any future impacts here? Thinking about the, the boat traffic, the size of the boats, and then whether or not we want to turn the upper part of the river here into a open space, like we have the float house. And the float house has lots of human on small little boats. And so the, the traffic, big boats, little boats. I've almost been run over a couple of times in my kayak by larger boats. So is this any consideration now that we need to think about while we're building this bridge in time to look at that down the road? Is that, should that be a part of, of this bridge thinking?
And, and maybe that's a bigger topic for a little bit of a different day. The whole philosophical concept of dredge, not dredge. I'm pretty sure that the bridge will not contribute significantly to the outcome of dredge, no dredge. And we ought to get that on our agenda to discuss dredge or no dredge and philosophically. But thanks for bringing it up.
I just wanted to bring that topic up to think about that, starting now rather than later.
Good. And perhaps mine might be the easiest question of the day. D Street Bridge is open web grading as you cross. What is the deck grading proposed to be here?
Go for it, Zach.
And so this is, there's an opportunity here with just new material types to the, where we don't have to use the great grading-type decking that you see on D Street. It is something that is still used on a number of bridges throughout the United States. But what's being proposed here is more of like a concrete surface. It's a lightweight concrete surface, but it is more standard that you would see on other types of bridges.
Perfect, thanks. And I think that fills us for the council ends of things. I'd like to thank you very much. And you're invited to stay and listen to public comments on this, but I don't think we'll be making you respond to public comments on this. And so moving on to our next item of the evening, thank you very much, Bjorn, is our general public comment. And during general public comment, the public is invited to make comments on items of public interest that are within the city council, subject matter jurisdiction, and that are not listed on the current agenda, with the exception of this presentation, of course. Public comments are limited up to three minutes of time. And depending on the number of persons wishing to address the council tonight, time will be allocated in equal shares totaling no more than 20 minutes. I'd like to ask our clerk to take over on our, our message for the evening.
Absolutely. We've received nine public comments on, for general public comment, and they're all posted on the website. At this time, I will begin a 30-second clock. So members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences. and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation.
So tonight, we have five cards submitted. And so the three minute time will be set for each speaker. And we will start with Susan Whitford, and we'll follow with Daniel Hernandez. Suzanne Whitford.
Listen down. There, there we go. Hi, my name is Suzanne Whitford, and my son swims on the AC Swim Club at the Petaluma Swim Center. There's a need that the swim center has and that the AC Swim Club has. We are asking to get the date from the city as to when the pool will be closed for the resurfacing project. This date is needed so that the coaches can get to work on finding available pool space for the team to use, to, to be practicing while the pool is being resurfaced. From experience, the coaches have found it difficult to find available pool space in the surrounding area. So we would really appreciate getting the date as soon as that's possible. It will greatly benefit the entire community of Petaluma swimmers for the city to be able to move forward on this project with the bidding and the permit process so that this project can be completed as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Hernandez, to be followed by Robert Hanson.
Good evening, council and mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here as your resident of the Riverfront community, actually probably one of the people you hear from the most hopefully on this. I live on Batista, and I'm actually really looking forward to the bridge being completed. Some of us actually moved to the neighborhood to actually take advantage of that, to cross the town in a more efficient manner. I know you'll probably hear from a lot of people that probably aren't a fan of it for whatever various reasons, but the, the understanding moving in there was a bridge was supposed to be built a long time ago. It's been a long time coming. And we're really looking forward to being able to cross the town a bit more efficiently and also provide some walking path to the new low housing apartment complex going up across river to grocery stores. I think some of the council should consider that that's really the only grocery store they're going to have within walking distance. That new complex is between 30 and 80% of the average gross income for the area. So be a welcome sight to have that in the city of Petaluma. And to have that bridge there was really going to help them out as far as pedestrian access to grocery stores that you don't have on that side of the river. Also like to bring up that, you know, I understand there's some concern about how long the river will be navigable. But today, the Coast Guard is kind of saying this is what it's going to be for the foreseeable future. And I think to delay it, to wait to see if that changes is probably not the best course of action. I like to see us move forward with all deliberate speed. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Hanson, to be followed by Tanya Moserich.
Good evening, everybody. I wish everybody the best in health and spirit. My name's Robert Hanson, vet, retired carpenter, grandfather, terminated California precinct inspector. I'm here to ask every citizen of California to contact your representatives, demand voter ID, proof of citizenship, paper ballots. We do not have fair elections in the state of California.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask you to stop for a second.
Let me explain.
I'd like to see a correlation to city business, right? I'd like you to correlate this to matters of the city council that are jurisdiction.
This is my public comment. This is my public comment time.
It is a public comment on city matters. So if it's not a city matter, it is not the time for that.
This is the opportunity for the public to make comments on things that the council has the power to affect. And the council has no power to affect the federal voting regulation. So, Mr. Hanson, if you can, if you can try to, we're waiting to hear if there's a connection between your comments and things that the city council can affect.
Then let me make them. For the first time in my life, the greatest threat to my country, the greatest threat to the health and safety of our children, is our state and federal government. If the citizens of California support abortion up to and including birth...
Again, we're not finding that city correlation in your comments?
You've been doing this to me for the last five months. This is my public comment time.
We are asking for that. And if you do not have a correlation to a city matter, something the city can do something about, then it is not the time for comment. And I'll ask you to yield your time and, and not continue to speak. It is about city matters, just to reiterate.
This is not the state of California given to me 76 years ago by a generation that instilled pride in country, pride in citizenship.
At this point, we're going to turn the microphone off, and we're going to say it's a matter of thought.
That celebrated the birth of children. This is not that state.
Thank you very much. One second, please. Thank you. Our next speaker, would you please introduce yourself, to be followed by Catherine Babowski.
Good evening. I'm Zhenya Mashkovich. I'm a resident of the Riverfront neighborhood where I live with my husband and my seven-year-old son and nine-year-old daughter. I would say that we have our disproportionate share of challenges for this very small neighborhood, the Caulfield Bridge Plan being one of them, the plan to dump thousands of cars into our very small new neighborhood. And there are many concerns from many residents, not all, but many, about the noise that the cars will bring, the beeping of the bridge. I don't know if any of you have recently been stuck on D Street when the bridge was open there, but please think about having that amount of noise in a residential neighborhood. The ability for children to walk and ride their bicycles, it seems like we have a baby born almost every month in the neighborhood. So it's really many young families. The amount of noise, I fully expect, will need, for example, triple pane windows if this proceeds, will need for the people like myself whose driveways are in Caulfield, will be blocked if, when the bridge is up. So if there's an emergency, we won't be able to exit. So that's something that's going to need to be mitigated. There are really many challenges with, with dumping thousands of cars straight into a residential neighborhood. Not to mention the concern about our, the value of our homes that I hope will be considered by the city. And if the bridge proceeds, then we should be made whole for the value that will be lost because we've all invested a lot of money into, into our homes. And then the other issue that I wanted to bring up, I don't think it's the first time that you're all hearing it, is the existing entrance to our neighborhood and the lack of safety there. Just today, someone was arrested for public masturbation there. After many residents called in, fortunately, the Petaluma Police is very responsive to our issues and challenges. But the situation is really untenable. We can't walk out of our neighborhood. We can't ride bikes. We often can't drive through because people are in the middle of the street or their carts are in the middle of the street or their tents are in the middle of the street. So I understand there's some work starting to be going on with COTS, but I just really urge you as our representatives to make sure that this neighborhood is safe and secure, just like your neighborhoods in Petaluma. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Catherine Babowski, who I see moving rapidly towards the front of the room. So we'll give her a minute here to get here.
Yes, my name is Catherine Babowski. I live at the Lew Woods, they live in the Olden Park at 1821 Lake Wall Highway. It's owned by Harmony, Harmony Community. Harmony Community is illegally charging the residents to pay for their property tax, 2% of their property tax for land. The residents don't own the land. Harmony should be paying their own taxes. And also too, Harmony is being sued in San Diego, Michigan, and statewide right now. And also too, on top of that, the manager, I let my neighbor park his driveway, his, his car in my driveway for my safety. The manager in Harmony said my neighbor can't park in my driveway for my safety. And then on top of that, she's allowing abandoned vehicles to be parked illegally in the back parking lot, in the front parking lot, and other, in the space to 75. And the cops are allowing this manager, this onsite so-called manager, who is not, not a US American citizen. By law, you have to be an onsite, you have to be a US American citizen to be operating and running a mow park in the state of California. And the cops allow her, her, her fans and family to break all the laws because they're friends with her, because they're working for Harmony Community.
Thank you. That was our last speaker of the evening in the public comment period. And I'd like to bring it back to council now and invite council to make their comments of the evening. Sometimes we've gotten a little long in our comments, and so I'll ask the clerk to set the three minute clock there. The council comments are a chance to bring us up to date on the activities of our liaison assignments and other appointments. And so I'll ask the council to be brief and concise. And I think we'll start tonight with our vice mayor, John Schreiber.
Okay, five items. First, I was part of the city chambers leadership program this year, attending 10 of those sessions. And we graduated the whole group, over 20 of us. And we are put together monies for a bench that's going to be put for Lynn King over at the Lynn King Tennis Courts at McNear Park. Now, we did have a tour, the last tour day was about a field day, and that was on the dairy farms mostly, and talking about the various other agricultural businesses within our watershed. And the, but the message was, we need to do a better job in our general plan for supporting our agriculture and our watershed in any which way possible. That's North Bay Water Shed Association that continues to say we need to work on our workforce development, our water reuse, and, and sea level rise adaptation. The climate resiliency, there's a regional group, which I just attended just for the first time, just to see what they were about. But this is a regional group, not just about the mitigation for reducing carbon through reduction of emissions, but actually about absorption of carbon in various ways. And one of the speakers this last time was about turning the carbon dioxide from industrial plants mostly, or from other high concentrations, turning that into limes, synthetic limestone. And we could, they're right here in the Bay Area, actually, right there with us, right off the waters. And they're currently using their, their synthetic limestone in San Francisco Airport for fixing the, the concrete runways. And it's possible, anyway, I suggest the staff look into that for, using it for our skate park coming up. They're a lot greener. Actually, it creates zero, net zero green of carbon cement is, is what was being said. And it's right here in, in the Bay Area, in the North Bay Area. Then there is the Economic Impact Sustainability Week was, was just last week, and I attended. Most of the day was, there was a whole day of virtual panels. All speakers from a variety of global economic sectors were very positive and hopeful about the businesses and the governments, about how they're moving forward with sustainability and working with, trying to go as green as they can over time. So there is a huge effort. And one of the speakers was John Wick, a local agriculturist here, working on regenerative farming on, on rangeland. And so he was actually one of the speakers at this international panel. So climate policy needs to include reducing emissions as well as collecting the emissions in the air. And finally, the 100 year celebration of Carnegie Library, which I was able to attend with several other council members here, but it was a pretty phenomenal event, 120 years for the, for the building. And they're, they're, they're of a cornerstone of our downtown, as well as the cornerstone in the building, with a new director is developing new programs and ideas. And like all nonprofits that are now running this museum, they do need some financial support. So I would encourage folks to consider financial support of our museum. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Kate Thompson.
Thank you. I do want to kind of comment about Riverfront. I am very concerned the relationship between COTS and the residents. You know, it's, it was a train wreck ready to happen when it was approved originally, by not looking at the Caulfield Crossing as being part of this project, and also the fact that this project was next to COTS. And I go down there and I see exactly what the neighbors are talking about, and it's really disturbing. And I know that the police department is working with them, and I do want updates to see, you know, what is going on all the time, because there seems to be problems down there. And if you buy into a neighborhood, you want to live in your neighborhood and be able to ride bikes with your kids and feel safe. And it really is not safe. It's a single lane in, a single lane out. And it was problematic from the beginning. And so we're going to have to deal with it. And I am looking forward to Caulfield, but I think there's got to be a little, a lot of mitigations when that project moves forward. And we're going to have to talk about those mitigations as far as trucks. And then we have problems with mufflers that, you know, can be turned up or down on cars. And start looking at muffler ordinances in our town and making sure that this is not a truck route, and other mitigations that are going to be needed. I want to comment, there was a letter to the editor penned by a former Petaluma City Manager, John Scherer, and he chastised me for some comments that I made at a planning commission meeting. And I just thought it was really interesting that a former city manager would attack a council member on a project. And I'm not really sure what his relationship is to the project, but he is in real estate, so I'm not sure if he was the broker for these, this group or not, but really inappropriate. And I hope Mr. Scherer is watching. And I just want to talk about my SCTA report. We're talking about the SCTA and the MTC in the 2050, plus looking, you know, into our future. But, you know, we were talking about census for equity, when we do the censuses every 10 years. And it's really hard in a city like Petaluma because we don't have any pocket areas of low income. And so the census really needs to look at communities differently, because if you want to go out for grants, you go out for funding, and you don't have those pockets, but yet they're all around the town, which is, which I prefer than having pockets of, quote, low income areas. So, you know, these are things that we're looking at for the next census to really change and make it right for the community, because those are dollars that come into the community. And you just don't get the same money when you have a community like ours, which is pretty equal. And I think it's great that people live everywhere in this community instead of pockets. And the other thing is the Petaluma Smart Station is the most used station on the entire line. And when the Corona station's up, I'm expecting that to be the first one also. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council member Barnacle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just had a few updates. I met with some neighbors around Paul Lane this weekend with some concerns about a new fence that's being installed. And I think the city's working on that already. So appreciate that. I would like staff to follow up with the swim teams with the date so that they can start looking for things. And then I think, you know, probably not in the next month, but in the next two months, maybe we can get a presentation on what is being done around the Riverfront neighborhood, just so we get an update and we actually hear all the things that are being done. I know that staff's taking action and working with COTS and things like that, but it'd be nice to get an update so that we're more in the know. And then final thing, the fair opens up this Wednesday. On Thursday is the ugly dog competition. And this is one of the unique fairs where everything is free once you're through the gates. So you can go on the rides, you can go and see music. You gotta pay for food and, and beer, but everything else is free. So go on out to the fair and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council member Healy.
Thank you. By way of, I guess it's a sort of a liaison report, I serve on the California League of Cities Board Subcommittee overseeing the effort on the California Business Round Table Initiative in November. Our Subcommittee met last week. Our subcommittee met last week. And I can report that there's a very robust campaign underway. Polling is very sophisticated, messaging is very sophisticated. The California Supreme Court has a deadline of 10 days from today to make a decision on whether to allow that measure to remain on the ballot. And then, excuse me, relatedly, there's a lot of talk in Sacramento about amendments to ACA 1, which some folks will remember is Assemblymember Aggie R. Currie's constitutional amendment to lower the tax threshold for certain infrastructure measures. There's an anticipation that that will be modified from its current approved form, and that faces the same deadline of 10 days from today. So that's being very secretive, but we'll find out what happens. And then, we did receive correspondence today on Old Adobe Developmental Services contract with the city being canceled by the city. And we have a letter and then an email response. I think the council needs to be more involved in this decision. I think OADS has performed very important services in the community. And rather than just cancel that contract outright and take away employment opportunities for individuals that really need those employment opportunities, I think the council should get involved and try to see if we can make this work out. And I'm kind of disappointed that staff acted as arbitrarily as it did. And I will be asking, when do we get to the consent calendar to add this to the agenda for the next meeting? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Posake.
Thank you. I had a transit meeting where we discussed in some detail one of the members who had had a fall at one of our bus stops. And based on that, you know, we got into some discussion of changes in ADA rules, you know, over time that some of our bus stations hadn't kept up. In any case, there's going to be some kind of review of some of the more complained about bus stops. Also, I attended the landlord recruitment luncheon, hosted by Home First Housing Navigator folks, where Cots got an award as a noted housing partner. And they insisted I bring it back to the city. And of course, I left it in my car when I came in tonight, but I'm going to get it before I leave. So they got a housing partner award that they feel the city was instrumental and insisted that I bring it back to City Hall. And finally, I attended over the weekend NBO, North Bay Organizing Project Gala at Pen Grove Park, as well as the Sonoma County Bike Coalition Awards in Monarch Park, where Petaluma did well with one of our members, Deb Fox, winning Bike Advocate of the Year for her work with trains to schools. And Petaluma, the city, winning an award for the best bike-related street reconstruction on North McDowell. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. It is great to get that recognition and recognition for staff for projects well-done regionally. This past week, I attended the mayors and councils of Sonoma County meeting, where we had presentations both from Sonoma Can, that's Community Action Network. They run the Head Start Program and many other social programs in our area. The stresses they face, the financing, and how much the need really is for all these social programs. Also, there's a presentation from the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority regarding ballot measure in November that would put much-needed funds here in Petaluma for affordable housing. And we're trying to stay ahead of that, so when monies do become available, we get projects built. I also attended a ribbon cutting for an AED defibrillator at Petaluma High School. Great presentation by our own battalion chief, Kevin Weaver, and I want to shout him out. But the gist is, these are getting installed everywhere, and they save lives, and they save lives if we know they're there and we get out and use them when need be done. So please try and make yourself familiar with these in places you might be visiting. Also got to speak at the Village Network, which is a senior advocacy group. They've had their 10-year anniversary now. They're keeping seniors busy and engaged through many activities in the community. I also helped organize an appreciation for the Petaluma Service Alliance for all their work in restoring Walnut Park and many other efforts they've done over the past 10 years. The alliance includes three Rotary Clubs, the Elks, the Lions, the Kiwanis, all of the good works groups in our community. Also attended the leadership class graduation. As Vice Mayor noted, he was part of it. I was only the presenter. But it trains community members in the nuts and bolts of how a community actually runs, from fire to food and everything. You meet monthly for a year, and the next class is starting soon. So if you haven't taken a leadership class in Petaluma and want to know what it takes to run a city, that's for you. Also went to a big event in Cotati at Sonoma Village. Okay, it was a beer festival, but I took the train up there. And I was really glad to hear Councilmember Kater Thompson shout out the train service. It's a short walk from the station to the venue. And I was pleased to see that many, many people used the train to get there. That seems to be the right way to get to and from a beer fest. And I saw lots of folks on the platform, both in Petaluma and at the Cotati Station. And it really surprised me when people say they didn't know that or they didn't consider that. So hopefully, we, again, get the word out on that. Those are my comments. I'd like to pass it over to the Assistant City Manager to help us with city activities.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council and community. Just two quick items. Wanted to acknowledge the point fire that's currently happening up in Hillsburg. And the city has been in close coordination with our county Office of Emergency Services partners and staying abreast of what's happening there. We'll continue to stay in close coordination and be ready to jump in and assist our neighbors and our county partners as needed. Secondly, I just wanted to reiterate the excitement that the fair is coming this week and weekend. This year's theme is Cowabunga. It's set to go Thursday through Sunday, June 20th to the 23rd. And for the past several months, staff have been, for most departments, have been pitching in and coordinating with our partners at the fair to host this year's event. And the past few weeks, we've seen a flurry of activity as the fair has begun setting up and getting prepared for the livestock, temporary arrangements, moving existing tenants around on the property, and completing a variety of inspections. And just wanted to express our thanks for the many staff, as well as community groups who are working behind the scenes to fulfill the commitment to have the fair here at the Petaluma-Sonoma Marin Fairgrounds. And tickets for the fair can be purchased in advance at sonomamarin-fair.org. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our consent calendar for the evening. And I'd like to ask the council if they have any questions or comments on the consent calendar. Councilmember Healy.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item two, as I indicated previously.
And so noted, any other questions on council? And so, before we go to public comment on this, shall we have our dialogue on item two?
Sure. In light of today's developments, I'd like to add an item for the tentative agenda for the next meeting that would be discussion and direction regarding cancellation of OADS contract with the city of Petaluma.
And is that, that's an item that staff can get onto our next agenda? Feel good about that?
I believe we could do a brief presentation on that, yes. I did just want to note for the council's benefit, this decision was part of a prior council agenda item. It was part of the MV contract extension that came before you in September of 2023. Although it was brief, there was mention in that staff report that part of that extension would be taking over some of those services that were previously performed by Old Adobe Developmental Services. So that has been before council, but we're happy to provide additional information about the history of that agreement and what it looks like moving forward in terms of bus stop maintenance.
So with that, please.
So without amendment to item two, I will move the consent calendar.
All right, well, hold that thought. Let's go to public comment on that. And we're going to now open public comment for the consent calendar only. And if the public is invited to make comments on items listed on the consent calendar, and public comments are limited, again, to three minutes per person. And I'd like to ask our clerk to read.
Sure. We did not receive any comments on the consent calendar. Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation, and the timer behind the dice will be reset for each speaker. Don't believe we have any cards at the moment.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's bring that back to council. And I'd like to ask Councilmember Healy to restate the motion.
Sure. I will move the consent calendar with the one modification to item two, the tentative agenda for our next meeting, to add an item for discussion and direction regarding the cancellation of the city's contract with Old Adobe Developmental Services. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm looking for a second now. I need a second on a motion.
I heard that staff has the capacity to bring forward a presentation. Is that accurate? That's not discussion and direction? What are we bringing forward, I guess? I'm just curious, trying to get clarity on that.
Well, I mean, the staff, I think, could bring forward a little bit of background on the history that we've had with the organization, what services they were performing for the city, some of the issues that we saw with that, and the change that was made, as I mentioned, back in September to move to MV, our existing transit provider, on the bus stop maintenance. So that's really informational. If we want to construct the item, so it's potential direction from council as well, I think we can do that, yes.
And is that a second there, then?
Sure, a second.
Thank you very much. And with that, a roll call vote.
Barnicle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Posake?
Yes.
Schribs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And that's our consent calendar. Wonderful. Now to public hearings and matters for consideration, our adoption or second reading of the fiscal year 2024-2025 Budget Appropriations Ordinance. And I'd like to invite Jesse Gooch, our Finance Director, to lead us through this.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So tonight, I am here for the second reading of the fiscal year 2024-2025 Budget Ordinance, and that's number 2889. The first reading, along with the budget and staffing resolutions, was brought to council on June 3rd. As the ordinance did not receive unanimous approval, we could not place the second reading on the consent calendar. Additionally, due to the non-unanimous approval, we published a synopsis of the item in the Petaluma Argus Courier on June 14th. So today, we are asking you for the second vote on the Budget Appropriation Ordinance for the fiscal 2024-2025 budget of $313.8 million. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Was very glad to see the modifications highlighted. The council did make modifications, staff made modification in council direction, and brought it back to us. Any questions from the council, any comments from council? With that, I'd like to open the public comment period on our budget item. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to our budget item? And please read our messaging.
We have not received any public comments on email, but I will read our instructions once again and give folks time to submit a card. Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. The timer behind the dice will be reset for each speaker. Doesn't look like we have any takers.
Thank you very much. That closes public comment on the item for the evening, bringing it back to council. May I have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Motion from Barnicle.
I'll second.
Second from Posake?
Yes.
Thank you. And a roll call vote, please.
Barnicle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
Healy?
No.
Posake?
Yes.
Schribs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And now, our next item is an introduction of an ordinance to amend the zoning map of implementing zoning ordinance to prezone a 12.9-acre site located at 5400 Old Redwood Highway to Business Park, Open Space Park, and Flood Plain combining district, zoning districts prior to annexation proceedings to be conducted by the Sonoma Local Area Formation Commission and to approve a resolution of application for reorganization, annexation of properties located at 5400 Old Redwood Highway. And to help us through this, we have Mike Janusak, our senior planner, who is bringing up all the data here.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald, and members of the council. Just pulling up my presentation right now. Okay, excellent. So my name is Mike Janusak, and I am a senior planner and consulting planner with M Group. And I'm here to present the staff report for 5400 Old Redwood Highway prezoning and annexation. An overview of my presentation this evening. I'll give background and context. I'll go through the scope of work. I'll summarize the planning commission meeting from January of this year. I'll read through public comments that were given in writing and compare the proposal against the applicable standards of review and provide staff's recommendation. The site is located at the north end of town. It is, the nearest intersection is Old Redwood Highway and Redwood Way. It consists of two parcels. The primary parcel is 12.2 acres, and that's the rectangular piece. And then the triangular piece is .7 acres. There's a 26-foot-wide driveway accessible off of Old Redwood Highway. Wilbrook Creek runs at the northwestern boundary of the site, and then the Keltrons right of way at the eastern boundary of the site. Here's a look at the driveway off of Old Redwood from Google Street image. And the site, as I mentioned, it's the north part of town. It's not, it's located outside of the city limit, but it is within the urban growth boundary. And so as such, it's been planned for by the general plan that's currently adopted. And that includes a designation for the North McDowell Subarea. And that's characterized by commercial industrial uses as well as vacant and underutilized sites that present commercial and industrial development opportunities. And the general plan land use designation, as I mentioned, has been already applied to the site. Business Park land use is applied to the site. There's also at the corridor for Wilbrook Creek, there's an open space designation for land use. And then there's also an urban separator along the north and the east boundary of the site. That's part of the general planning for it. And business park designations accommodate business and professional offices, technology park clusters, light industrial operations. Another policy document that, a long-range planning document that applies to this site would be the River Access and Enhancement Plan. And any future development would be subject to those policies. There is no zoning. That's the, one of the items before you is to apply. It's called, it's through a zoning map amendment, but it's called a prezoning. So it's, it would take place prior to bringing the property into the city. And the zoning that would be requested is business park, and that matches the adjacent properties to the west and the south in that there are business parks. properties to the west and the south in that there are business parks located on the sites. Those are, actually have PCDs, Planned Community Districts, that allow for flexibility in development standards. And that's Redwood Business Park 1 to the south and Redwood Business Park 2 to the west. There's also an open space and parks zoning along that creek corridor. That would be extended into the site as well, so that's part of the zoning map amendment. And then also carried on to, carried through to the zoning amendment is application of the floodplain combining district, which is implemented through an overlay zone, and that corresponds with any property in the city that has a portion of it within the FEMA 100-year floodplain. And that's symbolized by the blue hatching you see on your screen. The project description, there's two actions for your consideration this evening. The first is to introduce a zoning map amendment to prezone the 12.9 acre site to Business Park, Open Space and Park, and Flood Plane Combining District. And the second is to consider a resolution of application for annexation proceedings with the Sonoma Local Agency Formation Commission, otherwise known as Sonoma LAFCO. And the zoning map amendment, city council is the review authority for any proposed changes to the zoning code, and that's per section 25010. And those amendments can be adopted upon recommendation, adopted by the city council upon recommendation by the planning commission. Another reason for the prezoning is it's a prerequisite by Sonoma LAFCO that prior to an annexation, any annexation proponent must apply a zone of the receiving jurisdiction. The second item before you, the resolution of application, that's, there's no required findings in the zoning code that must be adopted for that action to occur. And also, state law doesn't require annexation proponents to receive a resolution of application. However, Sonoma LAFCO's policy is that an applicant for annexation receive a resolution of support from the receiving jurisdiction for any applicant, any owner-initiated annexations. Here's a look at Exhibit A in Attachment 1, which is the amended zoning map. And so you can see what would be applied is more of the salmon color to the majority of the site for business park. There would be that overlay zone for floodplain combining district, and then around the perimeter corresponding with the creek corridor and the urban separator would be Open Space and Park zoning district. The purpose of the annexation is to connect the city water and sewer services, and these connections would allow the property owner to lease up vacant space in their existing commercial buildings. And the connections, how they would connect and where to sewer and water, that's located in Attachment 6. Essentially, water is readily available within Old Redwood Highway, and then there would be a 736-foot sewer connection into Redwood Way as the nearest connection point, and the applicant would pay for that connection. And to summarize the planning commission meeting, that occurred, there was a public hearing with the planning commission on January 23, 2024, and the planning commission voted unanimously to approve a resolution recommending city council adopt the zoning map amendment. And they also voted unanimously to approve a resolution recommending city council adopt a resolution of application for filing the annexation application. That second resolution had the qualification that directed staff to work with the applicant to address concerns in a 2015 letter from council member Healy, and that's included in your packet this evening as Attachment 10. And what that letter describes is the placement of 11,400 cubic yards of fill that was placed on the property. And it states that the city's stance would not be to allow annexation prior to removal of that fill. At that time, the scope of work for subsequent development was upwards of 200 housing units, and it's since, there's no development proposed at this time, and so that's since changed. In following council's, or excuse me, commission's direction, the applicant and staff did some investigation and provided some documentation. So there's three attachments to help analyze any fill impacts. So the first is, there is a county fill permit that was issued in the year 2000 for that grading activity and placement of fill. The second was a technical memo by West Consultants, who is the city's preferred flood and storm engineer consultant expert, and that's been prepared as Attachment 11. And that's a present-day analysis of that fill. And it concludes that it does not recommend removal of the fill. And then, we've also prepared, a staff has, and the city attorney's office has prepared a pre-annexation agreement that would ensure that future development would be subject to the city's zero net fill policy. That policy covers adjacent properties that are within the reach of Little Brook Creek. However, because this property isn't in the jurisdiction, that policy isn't explicitly applied to the site. So this pre-annexation agreement would make sure that that would apply. Public comments, there were no public comments received at the time of publication of the agenda item. Two public comments have been received up until the hearing, the first of which expressed concerns about the imported fill. The second was a letter of support from an existing tenant, commercial tenant that is in one of the existing buildings. Staff is able to make the required findings for zoning map amendment, and there are no, again, there are no required findings for a resolution of application. However, the resolution does include some general findings that reiterate many of the findings from the zoning map amendment, such as general plan finding and SEQA finding. And I won't go through each finding, but I'll summarize for you. The business park and open space and park zones implement the business park and open space general plan land use designations, and so therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the general plan. The project site is located within the UGB, and the zone change would not change the development potential of the site. That was analyzed under the general plan. Future development would be subject to full compliance with the IZO and consistency with the River Access and Enhancement Plan, and would be directed through a pre-annexation agreement to comply with the city's zero net fill policy. The amendment and connection to municipal services would allow the existing commercial building to lease additional space, which would support the general welfare of the property owner. Petaluma merchants would expand the city's tax base and also allow the city to apply floodplain development policies and regulations that are intended to protect the city's health and safety. And again, there are no required findings for the resolution of application, but you'll also see there are some reiterations of general plan consistency and SEQA as well. The SEQA Class 19 categorical exemption has been applied. That pertains to annexations of existing facilities that are consistent with both the existing zoning, being Sonoma County, and the incoming future zoning Petaluma with those standards. There are no exceptions to the exemption under 15300.2 that would apply. And further, this site was analyzed by, because in the UGB, it was analyzed by the general plan EIR. So staff recommends consideration of the ordinance to approve the zoning map amendment for 5400 Old Redwood Highway, and also recommends that council consider the resolution of application for annexation proceedings with LAFCO. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'd like to bring it up to council for any questions. Councilmember Healy?
Sure. Thank you. So annexing it will make the property subject to the city's zero net fill ordinance, as you indicated, but would then the existing fill on the property be grandfathered in, or would that be subject to the city's zero net fill ordinance?
Well, if the property would be subject to the zero net fill policy, then any future earthwork would have to comply with a zero net fill policy.
Okay, the key word is "future" there. So the existing 11,400 cubic yards of fill is grandfathered in, and we can't touch it? Is that what staff's saying?
It essentially becomes part of the existing site condition, which, you know, I would defer to the, our engineers in the audience, the city engineer, and also, I believe, someone from West is here, but my understanding is it's already a part of the FEMA flood map and a part of the existing condition on the site.
Okay, so we can't touch it. I did submit some questions, and unfortunately, the question, the answers didn't come back until 5:00 this afternoon, and I don't think many people in the public have had the opportunity to see this. But one of my questions was, you know, when the applicant's consultant prepared this report, they were looking at a very binary question. Should all 11,400 cubic yards stay, or should all 11,400 yards be removed? And they proceeded on the basis of that question. What they didn't look at was the broader question, which is, what would be the best result for the community with that? Is there some opportunity to remove some of it, but not all of it? Is there some opportunity to sculpt it? And staff responded to my question in part, saying, "Staff do not have further analysis regarding fill removal beyond that already provided." So I feel we're being asked to make a decision, a very important decision, without having turned over every rock. No pun intended, but. And then, my last question is, there was an email chain that rolled in this afternoon, and it was started by Rick Savell, who's a longtime member of the Zone 2A Advisory Committee and who's in the audience and I expect to speak tonight. But he was asking Sonoma County Water Agency staff if this might be an opportunity for a floodplain detention or retention basin, something that the applicant's consultant clearly did not look at. And the water agency's response to him today was, "To answer your question, it seems that having an open parcel that could allow for detention and reduction of downstream flood elevations, if you could spend some time ironing out the details of how water gets into and out of the basin and come up with a design that doesn't show the flood increases as West's memorandum indicates." So I don't know if staff has a response to that, but that comes back to my previous point, that we haven't turned over every rock to make sure that this is the best opportunity for the community, because, you know, we've struggled over the years to create floodplain detention and retention ponds and terracing and the like, and it's slow and expensive, and it's one little piece at a time. And I'd hate to let an opportunity like this go away. So do you have any response to that?
Would you like me to address each question, or would you rather have us gather all questions first and then proceed?
However you like, but we're being asked to make a decision tonight.
Sure. So in response to your second and third questions, I defer to both our floodplain administrator, Gina Benedetti-Petnick, and also Dave Smith, the West consultant engineer who prepared the memo. They're both here on hand to answer the question. So in regards to both other analysis scenarios that the fill would be sculpted instead of a all-fill-or-no-fill scenario, and then the third being, could this be used as a storage basin for stormwater?
Thanks for the questions, Councilmember Healy. To the first question, you're quite right. That scenario, a partial scenario, was not explored in the models that were run for this study from the report that you saw. And is there promise or potential of utilizing that site for detention, and, you know, what benefits could, you know, could be leveraged from that? And without further study, I do not venture a guess on that. This particular area, when the models, when the model was run and run a few times to check and recheck and look at different, trying to understand what the water flow was, what the overbank situation was, it was far more complicated than even our experts at West Consultants had envisioned. And water flows, depths, depth changes took an unusual pattern, not what we would have expected, hence the retesting of the model a few times to confirm and reconfirm, and kept coming back with the same outcomes. So it is unusually complex around there. And of course, our new model goes into so much detail, it just, it begs further modeling, because there's, there is so much detail. It's taking into account the contours of the overbank area, the likes of which our modeling has never been able to see before. So we're learning a lot. This is the first time we've tested our new floodplain model to this extent, to look at sort of a micro area and explore how different changes to the topography could alter the floodplain response. And so what we found was not exactly what we expected. Very interesting, very complicated. And yes, could we explore it further with time and money? We could. Yeah.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Shribs?
Okay, a couple of questions, just to be clear on zero net fill, and also looking at a little bit of the history of the site, which I wasn't quite clear on, because it seems to be all around this fill that is main concern, and about setting precedent as to accepting it, not accepting it now or in the future. So that seems to be the main contention that we're running through. So I need to have a clear definition, because zero net fill to me, purpose is, we're not going to be adding fill into an area, flood area, so that water doesn't go anymore, go somewhere else. But it's already been filled. So this is, does it also reply in reverse? Net unfill, is it zero net removal? Are we allowed to remove even though we don't fill? Or does it must? Because the zero net fill is about filling, not about removing. So legally, the term, does it also reply to removal?
My understanding, it's a balance of earthwork, so you achieve a cut-and-fill balance, so it would account for removal as well. I'll defer to the engineers, though, once again.
No, good shot, Mike. That's true. So the key word there is "net," zero net fill on the site. So you can take away, you can add, as long as the net is zero. Again, you're right about the, the purpose is to avoid negatively impacting the floodplain and increasing floodwater depth, surface flood elevation. And I think that, I think that, I'm not going out on too far of a limb by saying... And I think that, I think that, I'm not going out on too far of a limb by saying that the city would have more control over the future impacts of site development for a property that's within our city limits than we do for a city that's in unincorporated Sonoma County, and I think that particular fill location is a case in point.
So in that case, because it refers to both in this case, both fill and removal for that, which I find a little interesting, because the purpose is about filling, not about removal, for the most part, as far as the original intent, I think, of that ruling, those laws.
Councilmember Shribbs, if I could, I think the key here, and we were kind of getting at this in response to council member Healy's questions, is that the fill that would have been required city authorization if the property were in the city's jurisdiction, was ultimately approved by the county, and the city's regulations for zero net fill did not apply, and they still don't apply, because the property's outside the city's jurisdiction. So, as staff have addressed, there's a provision in the draft pre-annexation agreement that would make the project explicitly subject to those requirements upon annexation, I think it probably would anyway, but the key is that the city's jurisdiction over the property only arises post-annexation, and this action that's before the council tonight is an intermediate step. And if I could, I'd like to add a couple of other comments about this intermediate step. The first is that it wasn't always the case, in my recollection, that Sonoma County LAFCO required a resolution of support from a jurisdiction that was being asked to take property into its jurisdiction through annexation. The fact that they do now, I think, is a good thing for cities, because it's a form of deference by LAFCO to whether or not the city being asked to accept property, excuse me, into its boundaries is in favor. There's nothing, I believe, in the law that can require the city to accept a property for annexation, it's one of your most discretionary acts, so I would say to council member Healy and the rest of you, if you still have questions about, or information that you feel you need before taking action on this, then that can be your direction, and staff can address that, because this is the most, this intermediate step is the time of greatest discretion that you have concerning the project, because, you know, there's no obligation that the city has to annex it. So, but if you do, it's going to be in the condition that it's in, and only then would it be that the city's jurisdiction would arise over it, and as you've also heard, it would need to access city facilities in the way, in terms of where they are in proximity to the property, at the project's expense, et cetera. Further and different development on the project would be subject to city review and city discretion, to the extent the application for development would be discretionary. So, and we could talk more about that if you have questions, but anyway, I wanted to sort of make clear, it's kind of a funny, this is kind of an intermediary action of the council, it doesn't actually affect the annexation, but it's a step that LAFCO requires that is, I think, helpful to us and the other cities, because it helps us have this conversation to contemplate whether, in fact, annexation is supported. And as you, I guess the last thing I'll say is, as you can see from the staff report and the recommendation of the planning commission and of staff, our general plan anticipates this property being brought into the city, it's within the sphere, it's within the UGB, and that's one reason why there's the findings of exemption under CECL, because the potential impacts of it being annexed have been already addressed. So I'll stop there, if you have more questions that I can help on, I'll be happy to do that.
I'm just trying to get some clarity on setting precedent and acceptance of the property as it is, and then who's going to be making plans for the future for that particular fill or not fill, and who's going to be paying the cost? Is there, it sounds like, once we annex the site, that we've accepted it and it's grandfathered in, that becomes just part of the property and it just exists as is, and then we'll deal with it in the future? And there's no option to put a caveat, a clause anywhere in saying, "We annexed it, but with the consideration that that part of the property, we will deal with that later, we'll annex this part of the property, but do something different with that part of the property?" Is there a way of any differentiating?
Well, so, right now, what the record shows is that, and you know, public works staff, correct me if I'm misunderstanding, but I believe what the record shows, for the analysis that's been done so far, is that it's undesirable to remove the fill, because the way the property behaves with stormwater and flood conditions is preferable in its current state to how it would behave if the fill is removed. And as you heard in response to the questions, council member Healy was asking, we haven't sliced that more finely to see, well, is there a way, I would phrase it this way, so we've got that answer from our experts in the model, are there ways to improve what the behavior of the site is in flooding conditions and stormwater conditions, short of removing the entire volume of fill? I think that's what council member Healy was getting at. We haven't asked that question, so we don't have that answer, but if we were to proceed with annexation proceedings, we should have to go to LAFCO first and then come back to the city council, on this record, it would be with the fill in place and with our zero net fill policy not arising until it's in our jurisdiction, not being effective on that site until the annexation is done, and then whatever is proposed on that project in the way of future development will be subject to our policy. So it could be that there's a proposal to develop the project that requires us to revisit the issue of zero net fill, if there's proposed excavation, building up the site, or lowering the site, or whatever, or both. As Gina said, net fill works in, zero net fill works in such a way that it's a balanced concept, it's not that you can't have any fill, it's not that you can't have excavation, it's got a balance. So, that's how I would...
I was looking for a legal clause that we would accept the property at the prior, before-fill time, and that the fill now, we would deal with that later as, because whether we accept it, it's filled now, we must say that that's now the starting point of zero fill policy, or can we start it at, oh, it's when, before it was filled, that's the zero fill property, because it was filled in inappropriately?
So I think the problems with doing that are, one, it's counterfactual, because it's in the state it's in, and two, the record suggests that we're better off the condition it's in than the condition before the fill.
Okay, good.
And if we had a different analysis, or a more, you know, if we looked at other questions and got other answers, then there might be other approaches that might suggest, but as far as right now goes, those are the facts.
Good, and the only concern I have is the modeling, having done modeling in my past, looking at the, even landsat data sets that are being used for elevation changes, and the maps that were given, at least what we're showing, the one map, of, oh, there's going to be an inch here, an inch there, the maximum number was like .5 feet, so that's a half a foot change from here to there, and on a micro scale, and the map, I would believe, is being pushed mathematically, statistically, for that type of micro management. So anyway, I just questioned the model as being that micro-managed versus a larger-scale system what it's designed for. So that's just a comment on the side, something to look at in the future, but I would just challenge the one inch here and one inch there, how much that really matters in a hundred-year flood only, not a 50-year flood, not a common flood, but a hundred-year flood only, we're talking about an inch here and an inch there, does that really matter on a hundred-year flood? And I would probably say not. Anyway, then looking at these costs, so we're talking about doing some servicing, so what about the cost of the city versus who's going to pick up the tab for putting in all these lines, both in our, on our side and on the side of the property, because apparently we have to do some stuff on our roadside also.
All on the applicant.
All on the applicant, applicant's going to pay for everything.
Right, 100% on the applicant.
Okay. Good, I think that covers all, and the train tracks in the analysis, the train tracks, when they were put in, were they raised up a little bit compared to what they were in the past? So it's to change the difference of the topography?
I don't know, but our other team members may know.
Okay, I'm suspecting the train tracks are raised up a couple inches from the past, from where the data set may have come from, that also is going to change water flows considerably in the inch level. So I just thought I'd just bring that up.
Well, that may be, and staff may know, but I believe the current modeling we're using is based on existing conditions, including the existing SMART improvements, but I'll let Gina address that, thanks.
Thanks, Eric, and thanks again for the questions. Yeah, that's true, the model is based on the current topography of those tracks, and I am not privy to SMART's plans to make changes to that track.
Okay, that's good.
Could I offer, I'm sorry, could I offer a clarification on an earlier response? It has to, since we're talking about fill and removal, and I didn't give a complete answer to the question about exploring detention, i.e. taking material out even below natural grade and creating an area of detention, and I should have pointed out that detention works alongside the river, adjacent to the banks of the river, so that it can carry or provide storage for peak flows. And creating detention that far away from the river even is not very effective to help deter peak flows, so it's not an, generally not an effective location that would even come up, you know, as a viable option, it could be looked at, but it's not, it's not jumping up and down as a likely scenario.
Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you, council member Barnicle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the presentation, staff. Wondering about any applicability of laws like AB 211, 2011, to this, and if we would be opening this up to by right residential development?
Great, thank you for your question, council member. We've looked at all of the current state laws that are intended to streamline or facilitate housing development, and based upon our analysis, this project site would not qualify for any of those streamlined measures that are currently in place, primarily because of its proximity to industrial development. And so we would consider, even though the industrial development to the north of the property would continue to be in county jurisdiction, is still an industrial use, and those are limited, you cannot be immediately adjacent to industrial use.
Great, thank you. And then, what sort of, like entitlements or rights do they have, would the applicant have to significantly increase the intensity of uses, or add new, you know, significantly add new structures or things like that with this new pre-zone?
Sure, well, they would be able to propose any allowed uses in the, within the business park zone, so that includes things like, you know, business and technology parks, different commercial uses, it includes light industrial uses, it includes the continuation, there's a rail spur out on that site, so distribution and warehousing uses, and I believe it also, well, I know actually, it also includes retail but only as a secondary use, so those are the sorts of things that are allowed by right.
Got you, thank you.
Council member, I'd like to add that any development of new square footage would require at a minimum major site plan and architectural review by the planning commission. We do identify in the staff report some actions that the applicant has indicated they would like to take to improve the existing property, in addition to bringing it up to improved connections to city services. Those proposed actions would either only require a building permit, would be ministerial in nature, or while they may require minor site plan and architectural review, it wouldn't result in an increase in square footage.
Follow-up question to that, currently, the same, the applicant would have that same privilege with the county right now, is that accurate?
Well, I'd like for the applicant to explain that, because my understanding is that they are limited in their use of the property, because they currently don't have access to water and sewer services.
Understood, thank you.
And I'll add that they, under the current LAFCO rules, they can't get those without annexation, so that's the big push. And, you know, I'll also note that sometimes cities insist on knowing more about the future plans of a project before they, you know, approve the annexation. In this case, you're not getting a lot of detail about what the future plans might be other than to know what they could be in terms of our existing regulations. Thanks.
Great, and appreciate hearing from the applicant during public comment.
Are we, we're going to hear from the applicant during public comment, I think? Do you feel that applicant needs to add to anything at this moment?
If the council would like a response to the question about what their plans might be for improvements to the site, then the applicant's available to do that now. Sure, I'd like that.
Let's do that, then, I'll take a break here for you to give us a one-minute summary.
Yeah, it'll be quick. My name's Peter Stanley, I'm a principal at Archologics, we're an architecture and planning firm, and we are consultants to cornerstone properties and have been for half a dozen years. The improvements to the property, what we're looking at are tenant improvements, so we're not actually asking to extend or expand any of the square footage that's there. There are tenants that are in there that would like to have services that are allowed under the BP, for instance, Retro Big Coffee would like to put a cafe there. We can't do a cafe off of well water, we have to do it off of municipal source of water. And so annexing in allows us to provide services in that business park that the city says they would like through their general plan and through their zoning, it also allows us to modernize that building, so to bring water in there also, to abandon the septic system and put in a modern sewer system. Also, with the fire storms that we have going on, it'll allow us to bring in fire water and we can put in a modern fire sprinkler system, and we are going to do all of that on our own dime, we're not asking for the city to do anything.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
Okay, I had a question, too, I mean, I appreciate hearing that summary there, that, you know, this allows greater use but not greater expansion of property, and the limitation is current city services, water, sewer, well versus septic, and I suppose fire coverage as well is another service you get when you come into the city. My question, it would go to, you know, an intensified business use of the same building probably wants a better driveway, better parking lot, there's impervious surfaces, what regulation covers that? If it's only a building permit and tenant improvements, not a convention, are driveways unregulated, is asphalt unregulated?
Sure, well, the tenant improvement would require a building permit, and that would be reviewed by the public works department and the city engineer, and it would be subject to, you know, whatever the thresholds are for impervious surfaces that would trigger water treatment, just like any other physical development proposal. It would not need a planning review, but it would still get scrutinized by public works at the building permit stage.
But if circulation changes, and it might not, but if it did, that's a SPAR finding required for that, if those external changes are happening at the site.
And kind of in summary, the other thing I'm hearing is that this is not an opportunity to fix a need in our flood system at this time, we don't see this as available as an opportunity, and we don't see it available as a need and solution at this time, right?
That's a broader statement than I would say based on this record. What I would, and again, staff, I don't mean to speak for everybody, and it's, as we've been talking about it, the analysis... been talking about it, the analysis is very complicated. I would say this record shows that removal of all the fill that was placed on the site and later approved by the county is undesirable from a stormwater and a flooding event standpoint. But that's all that shows. That's the question we asked, and that's the answer that was obtained. This is a discretionary act, though, and you can't be required to take discretionary acts as a city council, and if you have things you want to adjust in relation to the property, including, you know, future uses, which we just heard addressed, but that's obviously, that's not a binding limitation of future uses, or, you know, other issues. I mean, you also heard that staff believe that detention facilities are not helpful in that location. But that's not to say that, how do I want to put it? This time of this action is a time when the council has very broad ability to ask questions and to condition, as long as it's based on, you know, information, factual information in the record, its support for annexation. The qualifier I would say to that is that our planning documents anticipate annexation, so it's not a bizarre request at all. It's an anticipated request. And the impacts of that at the level of our EIR for the general plan have been addressed. But this is not something that the council can be forced to do, even if the record supports it at this time, especially if there are council questions.
I think what I'm going, staff's not identified a solution that's an opportunity right now. We've not identified anything we wish to do right now.
Well, I think that's right. I don't think staff have addressed, have identified unaddressed concerns or issues, and I think that's partly because all that we've received information about in terms of the property owner's plans right now are TIs. But, you know, obviously, it should be clear to everyone that if the property's annexed and city services are brought to it, its development potential has changed astronomically.
All right. Well, let's take this to the public side and move through that process, and I'd like to invite our city clerk to take the messaging from here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we received two public comments which are posted on the website. I'll read the instructions now for in-person public comment. Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker card to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation, and we've got a few coming in here.
Looks like we have about seven cards here, so let's start with Alex DeCarly and move to Dwayne Bellinger.
I recommend that the council pull item number eight for special consideration. The property lies within the FEMA 100-year floodplain, and it has been identified as having nearly 12,000 yards of illegal fill on site. This violates the city's zero net fill policy, which was cited as the primary reason for having annexation denied back in 2015 by the then-current council. Nothing has changed since in regard to the fill, and somehow this application has made it past planning. Zero net fill is a mandate. Snotted here would be illegal and potentially open the city up to a lawsuit by those downstream. I've seen the report from the applicant hired consultant, West Consultants. First of all, it does not seem appropriate that the consultant should be hired by the applicant. That's a conflict of interest, as the consultant's report could be influenced by the applicant. An independent consultant should be contracted to review the report by West prior to any decisions being made on the applicant's request for annexation. It should certainly be considered how this would affect the SMART Railroad and Lagunitas. It's quite obvious that the ultimate goal here is to fully develop the property into housing, since the city is now setting its sights on developing everything around the new Corona Depot. You may not be aware, but Lagunitas currently leases the spur and uses SMART Rail Service to receive product. If this property is eventually developed in the coming years, SMART will lose one of their four remaining customers, greatly hurting their freight division of the railroad, and hurting Lagunitas, one of the larger contributors to Petaluma's economy. City of Petaluma needs to prioritize and protect industrial sites, especially when they have the ability to receive rail service, as it reduces VMTs, lowers material costs for companies taking advantage of rail service, and frees up freight traffic on the streets for everyone else driving. Once these industrial sites, especially with rail service, are gone, there's no replacing them, further crippling our economy. Just because an industrial property doesn't have a clear use today doesn't mean it won't be crucial to Petaluma tomorrow. It's been quoted by the city that we are a flood disaster city. I think this is not a time where we should forget that, and we should, council members who have run on the platform of protecting and improving flood zones. There are many citizens downstream who would lose if number eight, if item agenda number eight is not further discussed, rather than getting rushed through with many unanswered questions. City has worked hard for years to improve the flood conditions in the Denman Flats area. Why would that now fall by the wayside? Why would the needs of the people fall on priority to a single applicant? And as council member Healy said, some of today's information was not made available till just prior to this meeting. With that and everything else I've said taken into consideration, I would urge the council to remove item number eight for special consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Dwayne Bellinger, to be followed by David Keller.
Good evening. I love Adobe Lumber. I used to go there and shop regularly. And I also have driven across Eli up in that area, and I've seen railroad tracks at Eli underwater. I've seen the bridge there, Eli underwater. I've driven across the bridge, but there's a foot of water going over it. The water that goes from the bridge there can go parallel to the railroad tracks. How far it goes, if we have a small increase in water level, will affect our rail. Two points I would make, one of which is I happened to be driving by there one day when it was Adobe Lumber, and maybe, no, post that, and the person with the truck was pulling one of the train freight cars, I believe was full of grain for Lagunitas, and it was pulling it towards the river, pulled upstream, because the area near the SMART was underwater. So they were pulling the train with a truck to move it out, the train car. It's just kind of a funny little image, a truck pulls train. Another day, I was going by there, and the front to the property was so far underwater, even I would not drive in. It must have had two feet of water right across the front of it, and I don't know if that water was going into the Redwood Business Park. But it's clear that major changes need to be made here, that we not run water down the railroad tracks, that we not run water there. And missing from this was a typographical, is that the word, typographical map? And so it's to be able to make any reasonable decision about where any changes are going to drive the water. Clearly, we need to take dirt back from the river and create a detention pond on this property for the amount of water that used to sit there and prevent access to it during a storm. I mean, clearly, they're going to have to have the road to it, full-time access, and I'm not even talking about 100-year floods. I'm just talking about regular flooding. So until they give you some ideas to what kind of the effect it's going to have on our society or our community, this should be put off and look at the maps. Thank you.
Thank you. David Keller, to be followed by John Hananeo.
My time is for David Keller.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council and staff. David Keller, Petaluma River Council, former council member. I was one of the lead liaisons with the Corps of Engineers during the design and construction of this project, also with the Baker Engineering, went through a lot of the assumptions that were used in the modeling to design and construct the flood project. And I cannot recommend that you take any action on this response to, or recommendation to Lafco without additional information about the impacts of remaining, leaving the 11,000-plus cubic yards of fill on this site. In 1998, 1999, on council, we were asked to provide sewer and water to the owner at that time. We declined unless he removed the illegal fill, as I understand that the county post-hoc legalized that fill, as opposed to the auction yard, where they were required to remove the illegal fill behind the auction yard. This would be a terrible signal to the county that says Petaluma does not care about preserving and maintaining, no less improving, the water storage in Denman Flats. Denman Flats was not included in the modeling for the core project, and yet they did say explicitly that maintaining or improving the storage capacity of floodwater storage in Denman Flats was critical to the success of our flood project for $100 million plus. We cannot afford to both leave in place the fill that was illegal and to tell the county, no, it doesn't really matter, because then the county can say on future projects, you guys passed on this one, yeah, we legalized that fill after it was done, but so what? It doesn't make any difference. The task that was assigned to West was designed by the applicant, so with limited assumptions, and what you don't have, as our engineer has acknowledged, is alternative designs, contouring, change of flow patterns, change of flow between Willow Brook, the property, and return flows. It's really counterintuitive that removing that fill somehow winds up flooding additional lands on the other bank of Willow Brook. And if we assume that that's correct, why wasn't there then a series of assumptions in the modeling? How can we remove the fill on this property without creating additional overflow on the other bank for additional properties? There's also no, excuse me, no modeling done on the change of the peaks of the flow downstream, because our flow in the river has three peaks, one from north, from Liberty Creek and Denman Flats, one from Sonoma Mountain, one from the West Side Hills. Excuse me, those three peaks overlap, and if we change the timing of any of those flows, we need to know in advance what that means in terms of the consequent peaks collectively. We don't have that information. You don't have that information. You also don't have any information on change of flows, the flow in the river, as well as the peaks, as well as the elevations, and the elevations downtown. So it was a very limited set of assumptions that was done by West, and that's what the developer asked for. You can ask Sherwood Engineers, who is doing your hydrological work for the general plan, to do an independent review with you as the client, with the city as the client, and not the developer. I love the properties, I love the businesses that are at that site. I use them. That's not the point. The point is you have a very serious potential change in longstanding city policy that goes back over 30 years, that you cannot change responsibly by just saying to Lafco, sure, go ahead, leave it be. Finally, I'll leave you with this. World-class hydrologist, Dr. Dave Doughty, who knows the Petaluma River extremely well, he advised and analyzed and looked at the design and the assumptions for the core project and critiqued it. He said flood management decisions should never be made by engineers. The decisions about projects must be made by elected officials who are responsible and ask three questions in public: who benefits? Who pays? Who gets the risks? Right now, you do not have sufficient information to answer those questions responsibly in public. I very strongly recommend that you table this item, that you get your information and modeling with different assumptions from Sherwood Engineering or some other independent engineering firm, before you make any decisions on recommending this and supporting the application to Lafco. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jamie Reagan, to be followed by Jamie Reagan.
That was for next agenda item. Sorry about that. Hi, my name is Jamie Reagan. I am at 50 Eli Road, which is basically adjacent to this property, and the water from Willow Brook Creek and adjacent to both sides of my property, actually, have flooded twice significantly since I've been at this location, and I definitely think that this elevation to this land certainly contributes to that, in addition to the SMART track, which was raised significantly near our property. The water runs directly adjacent to this property and underneath Old Redwood Highway, and then there is a storage holding space for water there, which goes over the freeway and then ends up flooding Henny Penny, you know, corner there. So we definitely have things to think about within our city limits regarding how the water flows down Sonoma Mountain and through Willow Creek there, and adjacent to this property. I think there is room for additional water storage, you know, to mitigate some of the flooding that happens in this area, and probably the city staff is not aware of all of this because it's, those are county properties. And so I think that is really important to consider when you're making this decision to move it into city limits. You know, I think flooding is really a big issue in this specific territory. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Ms. Reagan a question?
Yes.
Don't sit down yet, please.
May we have you for one question?
So your property is outside the city limits, is that correct?
It is.
And I'll dispose, you don't have to answer this question, but I don't believe the floodplain mapping we looked at considered impacts on properties outside the city limits. Is that correct?
It runs adjacent to the train tracks there.
Right.
Correct. It studied downstream properties which are in the direction of the city.
Okay, but nothing outside the city limits?
Correct.
Thank you.
By the way, I'm here for another topic here for cannabis, which is coming up, and changing this property to city limits, business park will also change the cannabis rate, right?
And our last speaker on this is Rick Savell.
Thank you, Chair. Members of Petaluma Council, Rick Savell, 499 Adobe Road. Can you hear me? Former chair of Zone 2A Committee for eight years, and most recently public member of Marin Lafco Commission. Two things. Gina had made a comment here a moment ago, and I think it was out of context, or at least from our perspective and the Water Agency, in relationship to detention and the river. This relates to detention that's going to overbank and hit Redwood Drive, McDowell, and go all the way down to Corona, not the river. It's not related to trying to relieve it from river. It's the impacts of going down, all the way down and flooding out Mobile Home Parks, hits Corona, turns right, that goes into the PGNA station, even floods out the Mobile Home Park behind that. That was '05, '06, perfect storm condition. David Keller had made a really succinct point, is this is kind of statement that we may want to make, on how we're going to treat properties like this. What signal does it send to the county? I'm going to give you a couple other ones to think about. We spent the better part of 18 years, we're going all the way up to the top of the bathtub up by Copeland Creek, everything in between, looking for possible detention sites. We looked at Coyote Family Farm. We spent a lot of public money trying to clip off 100 cubic feet here and there, so it doesn't end up down here. Politically, and to your constituents, right now, this is the only property that's left before it breaches and hits McDowell. Those people in those mobile home parks are going to want to see how hard you worked to take any water from coming down McDowell. But the Zone 2A Committee, as, you know, West did a preliminary study, but the Water Agency made it very clear, and Mr. Healy did too, we need to Agency made it very clear, and Mr. Healy did too, we need to see design alternatives. Something comprehensive, 13 acres, and a lot harder look at this than what's been done. Because if you don't, you're going to save us a lot of work and money because you can just see no encouragement for us looking for any more detention sites upstream or spending any more taxpayer money. If that's the kind of effort you're going to make on something like this. Now, I'm sorry to be a little terse about this, but I'm a little exhausted from all the work we've done over the years. And I'd like to see this taken a little more seriously in the context of the bigger picture because we're looking, of course, climate change, sea level raise. We don't know how bad it's going to be. And I'll tell you something right now, I was the first one up on that mountain, '05, '06, and I'm the one that took those pictures. And you get a five.
Thank you very much. Your time is, well, your three minutes.
Copeland Creek diversion. You've got a nightmare scenario to regret. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes public comment on this item for the evening and brings it back to council. I'd like to invite comments from council. Councilwoman Kater Thompson.
Thank you. And I appreciate all the comments from the public because we worked on a lot of this together many years ago. And for me, when we moved this forward from the Planning Commission, it was because the fill was going to be removed, you know? And so now the fill isn't going to be removed. We have all new numbers. And I just, I feel as though we really don't have the information that we need to move forward on this. You know, when I look at the flooding and when we're talking about McDowell, I also look at the bridges, which is the bridge at Old Redwood Highway that converses into industrial. That is too low. Then you have the bridge on Corona, the over crossing on the west side is way too low. And we are going to have more problems with climate change until we start addressing, personally, I think, the bridges. But I also think that I'm not really comfortable moving forward because this is pretty permanent when you bring that property in. And I do remember the flooding on that property. I mean, it's there and the flooding down on Corona. And this is after the flood control project was completed. And there was a time, I know, when Bill Cordham was talking about a retention pond, and I'm not sure if you guys remember, on the Hildebrandt property, which is on the south side of this site, 5400 Old Red. And, you know, Bill's not here, so I can't ask questions. But there was discussion about that, and I'm wondering if David Keller remembers that, what that discussion was. Because that is a possibility even today. And we do have to look at upstream. Because I know that upstream, there is flooding, there has been flooding in some of those properties, the old Snyderman property on the corner, across from Palace of Fruit, on the same side, there used to be flooding down there, and then there was augmentation down there. And so I'm really worried about upstream flooding. And we can't just look at this as, from this site down. It, water goes both directions. It just depends on the type of storm that we have. And, you know, and like I said, moving this forward from the Planning Commission, it was clear that we wanted that fill removed. And then now we're getting different information. And I'm just not comfortable with the information because I don't understand it enough. I feel like there needs to be some more analysis. And the analysis needs to be really broad about what's going to happen, even with these bridges, holding water back. And so I think that we have more work to do. And I'd rather just hold off and get more information before moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Healy.
Thank you. I concur with Councilmember Kater Thompson. I don't think this is fully baked. I think there's more work and analysis that needs to be done. And the broader question that needs to be answered is, what's the best outcome for dealing with this fill? It can be sculpted, it can be partly removed. Is there, as the County Water Agency staff indicated, possibly a detention or retention pond capability? And I certainly understand with city staff that this may not appear to be an ideal retention or detention site. But as Mr. Savell indicated, they've been looking for sites upstream for years, and they haven't found a property owner or a site that works. So, you know, we can't be too choosy about letting go the very good because we're seeking the perfect. And this fill amounts to seven acre feet of floodplain storage, if it's used that way. So I think the staff and the applicant have heard the concerns that we have, and I would prefer to defer this item. Thank you.
Councilmember Posecky.
Yeah, I would have to agree. I think it's, I can't feel comfortable approving it as is. I think we ought to be trying to do something to make things a little better downstream, like some kind of pond, ponding type of thing. Try to find a way to do that.
Mr. City Manager, did you want to weigh in?
I think our Director of Public Works and Utilities wanted to offer a couple of clarifications on some of the public comments. Thank you, Mayor.
I think this is the appropriate time.
Thanks for the opportunity. Just to correct or clarify one item I heard come up during public comment, and I'm going to ask Dave Smith, who's with us from West Consultants, to follow my comments with further clarification. But for the record, there was a comment about properties outside of city limits not being considered in the model. Just because it's not on the mapping that was presented to you, it was indeed included in the model. It is a full watershed model. And I wanted to make sure that was understood. And Dave, I think you're on Zoom. If you want to further clarify, and there was an earlier comment, I think, also that could use some clarification.
Sure, thanks, Gina. Yeah, there was a comment about, you know, output from the model not being available. You know, we could provide information about all of the hydrograph combinations, including, you know, from Liberty Creek and honestly, all the way down to Adobe Creek, if that information would be useful. In the report, we tried to make it succinct, so we're just getting to the point. But we could attach all kinds of output if that's helpful. Also, I did want to clarify that West Consultants was the consultant involved in the modeling for the general plan and for the past FEMA studies, not Sherwood Engineers. Sherwood was just on board for the climate change portion and some other pieces, but West has been doing the modeling.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Shribbs.
Okay, I'd also like to follow what David Keller said about three things, risk and benefit and cost. As far as the cost, the applicant, as far as this project that's being proposed, are accepting all the costs right now. And then there's a risk for downstream costs that we may want to look at. But actual costs are being covered. As far as benefits, not only does the property folks get to have improvements that really are essential, but our citizenship also gets some benefits from having the service that's provided for the water that would be delivered. So the cost and benefits are definitely in favor of going ahead with a project of some sort. What really seems to be talked about is this risk of the fill and the flooding, which is a lot of historical. Who was the owners when the fill was made? Those owners are probably Adobe lumber, and they were probably gone. So this is historical. So now we're left with this bit of a mountain that's like unnatural, but that's what we have. So we now have a condition that's historical. And who's in control? Who's going to manage it? And who's going to make it better? At this point, is the county going to move and say, oh, let's make this better and let's do a better flood conditions and do that? And are they going to force the property manager to do all that? I doubt it. They haven't done it. They're not going to do it. So if there is a problem, who's the better manager of this property, county or city? At this point, the way our city is and city engineers and the flood management, I think the city would be a much better management of this property than the county to solve the problems that we're talking about, the flooding that's potentially here. So I would trust our city government and staff to manage the situation on this property for the flooding conditions better than the county could. There's definitely demonstrated incapacity to manage, whether it be the flood 2A that's being looked at, that still can be continued to look at. But the situation has not changed in years. It's not going to change unless we do something different than what we're doing now. So to do something different now, I would say, we got to do it ourselves. We've got to step in and be the better managers, be the mom and dad here. Not let the county get away with what they've gotten away with and try to force and put it on the current property manager. Oh, we're not going to let you do your property management or do your improvements because we're mad at the county for not doing its job properly. That's hurting the current occupants who are providing services to us. So I would be favoring taking over the management of the property, annexing it, putting in the water, and getting them started in the right direction. And then we can do something in a positive direction. Otherwise, leaving it alone as is, sounds like that's unacceptable to me, leaving it alone. So I would be in favor of moving forward with the annexing, going ahead with this project, and then working with the property owners to improve it over time as we can. And make it better for them and for the neighbors. And work with the Flood Control District 2A, see what we could do differently down the road here, but not leave it in the current hands that it's in now, which is the county, which is a do-nothing operation. So that's how I'm thinking about this whole thing.
Okay. Thank you. I see Councilman Barnacle's hand.
Yeah, no doubt, I think the city's in better position to manage the property. And the current conditions aren't going to do anything about the flooding that's happening at your business. But I think what I heard from West is pretty accurate, that we didn't get a very thorough report. And that's what I think I would like to have, to feel informed about making these types of decisions. And I agree with Councilmember Healy and Councilmember Kater Thompson that the question is not should we remove 11,400 cubic yards of fill? It's what's the, like, what's the optimal way to incorporate this into the city and provide benefits to, you know, to the community? I don't think that it's removing 11,400 cubic yards of fill necessarily. That's my gut. But like, a two-page memo for a longstanding city policy just doesn't feel like it's sufficient to feel like I know what I'm getting myself into. I'd also like to have more information about the intensity of uses. You know, right now, much of the site is impervious, or at least not asphalt. And I'd like to understand what type of, like, what are we signing up for? Like, you know, how much of the property could become asphalt and thus, you know, accelerating, you know, runoff and things like that? And I am not getting that. But I definitely agree with Councilmember Shribbs that, you know, I want to see the project hooked up. But there's, you know, quite a few unanswered questions about how we're taking the property on to feel like I feel great about incorporating it right now or, you know, recommending annexation.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I too concur that I think the city is a better regulator of all things flood within our city and would like to see the city regulations, not management regulations, be the guidance we follow. But I don't feel like we're ready to yield our discretionary opportunity here. If there is something that needs to be done now, I think we need more data, more opportunities. You know, in terms of what can be retained on property, you can't take out the bottom foot of a fill stack, you know? You take out all the fill stack. That's probably not viable. So I would like to have more hydraulic information about the outcome. Because like in my questions, I think maybe there's opportunity here. We have to prove there's need that matches opportunity. Maybe there isn't, maybe this doesn't go anywhere, but more data is needed before a council decision. I don't want to push it to the point where the applicant backs, the costs that we impose back the applicant off of any opportunity here. So it's a question of more data so we can do the better thing for the city. You know, counting noses across the board here. I'd like to offer, I think it's an opportunity here to ask the applicant if he wants to withdraw rather than vote. Or is there a distinction in your, I think I'm asking for a staff and legal interpretation as well as the discussion to the applicant?
Well, for our part, there's a majority of council votes in favor of not advancing and not approving the resolution supporting annexation at this time. But I'm also hearing, there's, you know, like there usually is with our council, and it's one of the great things about our council, there's layers. It's not just one layer. You've got to look at all the layers. And we'd have to go back through, but I think the immediate next layer beyond not sufficient votes to go forward with the package tonight is wanting more information. And I'm sensing by a number of members that desire to support potentially annexation, but based on a more thorough record that really addresses the, that fully explains the hydrological analysis, looks at potential benefits of the project, provides information about potential.
So I think we're summarizing correctly, but is there an advantage to the applicant to withdraw and provide? Or is there, would you rather have a vote?
You could, you have options, and I don't think we have procedural constraints such that we, or shock clocks or anything like that. You could continue this for staff to return. If you did, I imagine we'd need a date uncertain.
I think that would be the best, continuance or date uncertain.
I think we'd like to offer that to the applicant to continue. And would that be, I think we can ask directly, would that be an acceptable action from tonight's meeting?
Obviously, if we go to a vote tonight, we're not annexing. That's clear. I would have to talk with ownership about that. If we're not annexing, are we pulling completely out and going back to the county? And then the city of Petaluma will no longer have any jurisdiction over this piece of property. That is not our desire. Obviously, we came to you because we wanted to bring this property in. I think I would like to make a clarification to Councilmember Kater Thompson's comment that the Planning Commission knew we were going to remove the fill. That was not what the Planning Commission decided. What they said was, any future development? We were planning to just come in and just fix the building up and bring services.
I'm going to ask, say yes or no.
Yeah, so here's the thing. I need to understand what it is you want, because you heard from David Smith, he's already analyzed all of this. If what you're saying is somebody 25 years ago put in fill, it's not illegal anymore, it actually is permitted fill. If what you're asking us is for us to analyze now as part of this annexation application, you want us to analyze all the potential flood concerns that the Petaluma has because of this 11,000 square cubic feet of fill? I don't think we can do that. What we, and by the way, we only paid for West. We did not direct them. West was directed by staff.
I'm going to let it go right there. And, you know, we've given staff plenty of feedback. Staff can communicate with you and things. Council's had its say on this and understanding. I don't think we're going to get any deeper. We're at the point of moving, making a motion here. And so it's continuance or motion. And I'll ask some of the council, Councilmember Shribbs?
Clarify something.
No, I think we're at the motion to.
Okay, motion stage.
And, or he can ask for a continuance. But without that ask, Councilmember Barnacle.
Yeah, I'll say that I want the city to annex the property in. And I'm not expecting that 11,000 square feet of cubic yards of fill are all removed and putting that on you right now. I want more information. Like, there's a two-page memo about the hydrology report.
I think we all have expressed.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm giving clarity so that the person knows what the, you know, okay, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to continue this to a date uncertain, to bring it back with more information. date uncertain, to bring it back with more information about the hydrological impacts and the potential use intensity and amount of impervious surface that could result from annexing the property into the city.
Okay, I have a motion. Councilmember Healy?
Second.
And no other comments? We'd like to roll call, vote, please.
Barnacle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Posake?
Yes.
Shribz?
No.
And-
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Great presentation, I think we understand the complexity of the beast. We're moving to our next item, which is a, we are on the introduction of an ordinance making findings exemption under SEQA for glossary of the Petaluma implementing zoning ordinance. No, I skipped.
Number nine.
I'm on, we belong on number nine. Thought that didn't feel right, there it is. Resolution appointing individuals to city committees, commissions, and approving city council liaison appointment to the newly created public safety advisory committee. And to help us with this, our city clerk, Caitlin Corry. Corly.
Yes, just one moment, let me pull up my PowerPoint. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight we'll be tackling the annual appointments for our CCBs, our committees, commissions, and boards. Oh, oh, this is cannabis.
Can we bring that closer?
There we go. Okay, sorry, trying to run different PowerPoints this evening. So just to give you guys a little bit of background, there are 32 open seats, 20 of those are terms ending at the end of this month, six are vacant seats from some unexpected vacancies, and then six are, of course, are for the newly created public safety advisory committee. The recruitment was open from May 8th to June 6th. We did postpone the opening slightly from previous years in order to be able to include the PSAC appointments. And just FYI, the deadline to apply was 5:00 PM on June 6th, that's what was listed on the website. However, a few social media posts went out stating that the deadline was Friday, the 7th of June. So the applicants who submitted after that official deadline but by the incorrect deadline of June 7th are included in the packet still. We just noted that they came in after the official deadline, but that was the city's error. We did have an excellent turnout, we had over 75 applicants. We do have some applicants who applied to multiple CCBs, I know this came up in some of the council questions. So we just wanted to point out that government code, section 1099, codifies the common law doctrine of incompatibility. It states that a public officer, including but not limited to an appointed or elected member of a government board, commission, committee, or body, shall not simultaneously hold two public offices that are incompatible. It does exempt those offices which are specifically authorized by statute. So for example, the enabling legislation of the tree advisory committee and the pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee require a liaison from the planning commission and the recreation, music, and parks commission, which are one-year terms similar to the council liaisons. But while members have served on multiple committees in the past, staff would recommend council not appoint individuals to multiple CCBs unless there are enough, are not enough applicants for certain committees, at which point staff could consider whether or not that 1099 is implicated, depending on which two CCBs it is. In terms of outreach, we had advertisements in the Argus and the Press Democrat, our comms team pushed out some excellent social media posts, which were kind of bios of some of our sitting CCB members. We also had announcements in the community update on the website and during our city manager comments at council meetings. We pushed the flyer out at city facilities. Aya from our recreation department and senior advisory chair Nicola Frye tabled at the Cool Petaluma Expo, and I did some on-the-ground recruiting there. And of course, we reached out to our community groups to consider applicants, encourage applicants. So at this point, I'm gonna pause and let the mayor outline the voting procedures for the CCB and then move it to council questions and public comment.
And I did have just one question of your presentation I might ask, they're asking the council. So that, that item about not appointing the same person to multiple committees, we just, was that distributed commonly to the council, anyway?
It came up in the council questions and it was included there. Our city attorney might want to weigh in on that as well.
Sure, it's, it's come up at various times in the past, we've talked about it in the past. Caitlin was accurate in how she described how that's been approached. And the key is, you know, but for our being a charter city, we wouldn't even be able to have council liaisons on those subordinate bodies because you'd be reporting to yourself, which is in fact the case, but, but our, our home rule power as a charter city trumps inconsistent state law on municipal affairs, which this is. So, so we're fine with that, but, but as, as a result of that, those concepts, it's generally been my recommendation against having multiple appointments, particularly when one of them is to one of, I'll say, the stronger subordinate bodies, like for example, planning commission, because they're an approving body too. And if a member on another body is advising the planning commission and they get to act on their own recommendation, they're getting, their voice is getting amplified, and I don't think that's the intent of the council's structure with liaisons. I think the intent of this liaison structure is to help ensure that the subordinate bodies are, are operating in a way that's helpful to their advisory role to the council and to help inform that and in a way supervise that. So that, those are some of the background thoughts, and at the same time, the council wants to fill the bodies, and sometimes they haven't had enough applicants, and they've made some choices, and, and we're of course gonna facilitate, you know, the council's decisions as best as we can, and those are some background considerations in response to some of the questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This voting for committees and commissions sometimes gets tricky, so we're gonna run through how it works one time. We will consider each committee, commissioner, board, CCB, one at a time, with the city clerks first gonna show us the initial preliminary preferences submitted by council at the beginning of tonight's meeting. And then council will vote for the number of seats available in each CCC, CCB. So we have six council members tonight, four votes supporting an applicant is required majority. If an applicant receives a majority of vote, they will be appointed. In the case of a tie, there'll be an additional round of voting if, if you have four, but there's only two people have four and there's one seat available, we still need to do a runoff, but only between the two that have the majorities. If no applicants receive a majority, we'll do a second round of voting, include only those who've received, or at least received a vote in the first round. We'll do additional rounds of voting until an applicant receives a majority. Council is not required to vote in any round, abstaining is permitted. This may mean that a position is not filled due to lack of majority vote. The applicant with the largest vote total will receive the longer appointment terms. In the case of a tie vote between applicants to be seated, two different term lengths, a vote for the longer term is to be held to determine, who, between the tied parties determine who gets the seat. Well, clear on that? Council, vice mayor Shribz?
It was brought up about multiple committees. I think I spotted just one myself, the possibility. We do have one, Darren Rukusen is in the audience here, but he's already on the planning commission and is re-upping for the tree committee. But that was the only one I, I was able to spot through, the whole thing that might be a single person on two different committees. Are we saying at this point, that's not, we're not gonna allow that, or are we saying we'll do that next time? I'm not sure what our decision, if that was a decision or a prompt that, that we want us to make before we start the voting.
And I believe that that is a longstanding statement, and the question was, did we identify it to the, to the council so they knew it in this round? And does that accurately say that?
Yes, I, I think it's been a practice, it's been talked about before, it's not a decision, the decisions are gonna happen up here tonight, and we just wanted to have that information available to everyone in case that's-
So you're saying it's guidance, not requirement?
Right. I mean, what, what is a requirement is, is what the charter says about maximum turns on commissions, those don't apply to committees, and those that are in the, the enabling legislation that has been established for all the committees applies to your decisions tonight unless the, until the council changes that. So those things you have to follow, but otherwise you have a lot of flexibility.
Okay. Here. And, and as we do on all our, I'm sorry, Councilmember Posake?
I just wanted to possibly suggest a slight amendment to your description of, you know, saying you're going to eliminate folks that have zero votes, but what if you have three people for one, one office and the votes are three, two, one? I think we should eliminate the lowest vote getter, if it's different than, you know, when you, when you go around for a second round of voting. I mean, isn't that the principle of?
So you're, so you're saying at least eliminate somebody?
Yes.
I'm, I'm hopeful, you know, three, two, one with one, that this won't occur, but I, I think we have the latitude to say-
Absolutely. As we're going through, we may need to eliminate more than just the zero vote getters, it might also be the one vote getters. It'll depend on each individual one.
And with that, I'd like to open up a public comment on this item. And please do.
We did receive two public comments, and those are posted on the website. And at this point, members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. The timer behind the dials will be reset for each speaker. I think we have one card coming in.
Please begin.
Thank you, and I feel compelled to make a comment because I was, I was named in the preamble. I just want to point out, you know, I applied to, or reapplied for appointment to the tree advisory committee, and, you know, the role of planning commission, tree advisory committee is so different. I mean, tree advisory committee is not really a policy-setting body, we're not at this point reviewing any developments, I don't see how we would anticipate any conflicts between the two bodies. And as I said in my application, you know, tree committee is something I'm really passionate about, I feel like we have a lot of positive momentum on certain initiatives, really to spread a positive kind of tree culture or direction for the city. Mostly that happens at a support capacity, in kind of a subject matter expert capacity, but not in anything I would see conflicting with decisions made on planning. We don't look at zoning, we're not looking at flooding. It's really two different roles, so I appreciate the, kind of the risk averse stance that the city attorney is taking. I think these roles are so different, and I think again, because I've helped lead some initiatives on tree committee that I want to see through, I would just ask for council members to take all that into consideration, along with the advice or guidance there by the city attorney, and just reiterate again, you know, how excited I am to be a member of the tree advisory committee and continue that great work, including Tree Fest. So, thank you.
Thank you. That closes public comment. Oh.
It looks like, it looks like we have one more.
Just another comment, similar to Darren's. I'm on the senior advisory committee and I applied, thank you. I'm on the senior advisory committee and I applied for the planning commission. Those are really different things, and we don't coordinate very back and forth on those sorts of things. And also, I know that on the senior advisory committee, if I was to get on the planning commission, that would make our committee one short because of the number of people who applied for it. So I'm asking that if I get on the planning commission, to stay on the senior advisory committee.
Thank you. That closes public comment. That brings us back up to council. Before we start the voting round, anybody have a comment or concern? And then Caitlin, I believe you have the first round in your hand?
Correct, yes. So we'll start with the airport commission. Nice to start with an easy one. Colin Perry received six of the initial votes, and he was recommended by PAPA for the PAPA seat. So if you guys are comfortable with this, we'll move forward with Colin Perry for the airport commission.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay. This one will be a little bit more complicated, but I think we should first eliminate, these are the initial votes, I think we should eliminate those who received one and zero votes and take an additional vote, if that makes sense to you.
That would leave us with three candidates, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
For two seats?
Yes, I will eliminate these and we'll be able to see a better list.
And while you're contemplating that, if I can just add for the record that what the members of the public are seeing is the tabulation of the forms that the council turned in tonight, which is our way of announcing what their initial selections are to comply with the Brown Act requirements, as we receive further direction from the council about arriving at your ultimate choices. Thanks.
Great.
All right, so I think we're ready to proceed on this, anyone do it on a roll call basis?
Sure, so I'll have each of you vote for two, and these will be the, hopefully the two winners. So Barnacle?
Thors and Krishna?
Kater Thompson?
Thors and Krishna?
Healy?
Krishna and Thors.
Now? Oh, my apologies, Posake?
Hagi and Krishna.
Shribz?
Krishna and Thors.
McDonald?
Hagi and Krishna.
So it looks like Kami's tabulating those. We do have some consensus, so those two will be Krishna and Thors.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Just a point of question here, is, is it possible to have an, being students, many times they can't, one or two can't show up at times, can we have an alternate as a possibility fill in?
The enabling legislation does not provide for that, so not, not unless the council wants to revisit that at some point.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the historic and cultural preservation committee. There are two regular members up. There's also one Petaluma Museum Association Heritage Homes and Landmarks Committee representative for a one-year term. We're still waiting on their recommendation, so just to note that you're not gonna be considering that tonight, but we will bring that back as soon as we get a recommendation from them. These were the initial votes, we do have consensus on Mario Lopez, he received five votes.
Well, majority, anyway.
Sorry, yes, majority. There is a tie vote for the second round, so if you're comfortable, we'll do a, a second vote between Samantha Barclay-Saxon and Alexander Genison.
Right.
So if you could vote for one during this round, Barnacle?
Barclay-Saxon.
Kater Thompson?
Barclay.
Healy?
Barclay-Saxon.
Posake?
Barclay-Saxon.
Shribz?
Same.
McDonald?
Same.
Okay, so we have a decision made there. Thank you. Moving on to measure U, there was a majority vote for Scott Fishman, so if you're comfortable there, we can insert that into the list and move on.
Okay.
This one was, again, a little bit more complicated, but there was a majority vote for William Jaeger. We have one other regular member that we need to select tonight, and also one shorter term to fill an unscheduled vacancy expiring in 2027. term to fill an unscheduled vacancy expiring in 2027. So looking at the votes here, it looks like it makes sense to eliminate those with one and, and zero votes.
Okay. Right. So there's not really a runoff. Hold on, before you move on there, so if you have two candidates left in there, is that what you're looking at?
There's two, yeah. We still need two seats.
And we still need two seats. They don't have majority votes. So are we going to eliminate all the ones as well right now? That's what we're saying.
Well, maybe we should just eliminate the zeros first and see where it lands.
Well, let's, is that the council's wish? Great, eliminate the zeros, please.
Got it. Oops. Okay, so-
Vote for two?
Vote for two, please. Well, yes, vote for two.
Is Jaeger in?
Can you, Jaeger's already seated.
Seated, so we'll vote for one.
So we vote for two now, one for a full year, one for a partial year. But we don't distinguish between them. The lower of the two will get the short year. So, yeah, we're ready to go.
Okay. Barnacle?
Baushaw and Myers.
Kater Thompson?
Baushaw and Myers.
Healy?
I'm just going to vote for Baushaw.
Okay. Posake?
Baushaw and Schleray.
Pluto and Schleray.
And McDonald?
Baushaw and Myers.
So that has determined the long seat to Baushaw.
Correct. But it looks like we'll need to do one more vote to determine the vacancy expiring in So we'll eliminate some of these. And we'll do one more vote. So please vote for one.
Myers.
Myers.
Healy?
Schleray.
Posake?
Schleray, I guess that is.
Shribs?
Schleray.
McDonald?
Myers.
Uh-oh.
All right, we're at a standoff with the even number of council people present.
I'm happy to, to support Joanna Schleray. She's had a, there was so many excellent applications for the P-VAC Committee, I could have picked six people and been happy.
It really was, so.
I agree with that, too.
And so that solves the dilemma, and we have the short seat going to Joanna Schleray.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, Planning Commission. So we did have three applicants who received majority votes, and it looks like Brent Newell received six votes, so it looks like he will get the longer term expiring in 2028. There are two additional terms expiring in 2025. There was a tie between Nicola Frye and Blake Hooper, so if you're comfortable, I'll do another round of vote between just the two of them.
No, I think that, doesn't that work out perfect? The long seat goes to Newell, and the two ties go to the two short seats?
I'm sorry, you're right. I, for some reason, I was thinking it was opposite. Yeah, perfect, so we're good to go.
We're good to go.
Okay. Three regular members for the Public Art Committee. We do have two members who, or two applicants who received majority vote. So we'll need to do one more round. I can eliminate the zero vote and the one vote.
Right.
Okay.
You're looking for one vote on this one?
Correct, one vote. Barnacle?
Quint.
Kater Thompson?
Quint.
Healy?
Leland.
Posake?
Leland.
Shribs?
Leland.
McDonald?
Leland.
Okay, we received a majority for Dorothy Leland. Apologies on the small print on this one, it was difficult to get everyone in there. So we have three regular members for a four-year term expiring in 2028, and then three members for a shorter term expiring in 2026. Four members did receive majority votes, so Michael Miller will be one of the three members receiving a longer term. So I think first we could have the vote on the, the second place, five vote folks, to see which one of them would go into the shorter category, if that makes sense.
You, I'm sorry, you have, how many with majority?
Sorry, we have four total, but we only have three of the longer terms available.
Right, okay.
So there's five, those five votes, we'll do a vote to see which one of them will get the shorter term first, and then we'll come back.
Okay.
Also, I, I think you missed mine, but I meant to mark Catherine Sullivan if I didn't, I'm sorry.
Catherine Sullivan. Oh, okay. We can add that in. Okay, so we'll do a vote on the, the longer terms first. So please vote for-
I think you cut out Miller there. Miller was another one that was on there.
He already received, he received six votes, so he was-
Oh, okay, got you.
He was getting a longer term. So now we're voting for two of these folks to get the longer term, and the person with the fewest votes will get a shorter term, but will still be appointed. Apologies, I know this is a little bit complicated. Thank you for hanging in there. So two votes right now for the longer term. Barnacle?
Fox and Obsler.
Kater Thompson?
Fox and Obsler.
Healy?
Alverde and Fox.
Posake?
Alverde and Obsler.
Shribs?
Fox and Obsler.
And McDonald?
Alverde and Fox.
So it looks like Fox and Obsler, Fox and Obsler will receive the longer terms, and Alverde will receive the shorter term.
Yep.
Okay.
You're doing amazing, by the way.
Thank you. Okay, so now we still have two of the shorter terms, so I'm going back to the original. I'm going to eliminate all the folks who were already appointed. And then I think we should eliminate the folks who received one and zero votes.
Right.
Okay, so please vote for two who will get two of the remaining shorter terms. Barnacle?
Mendez and Sullivan.
Kater Thompson?
And Sullivan.
I'm sorry, I missed the first one.
Nissler.
Nissler and Sullivan. Healy?
Kearney.
Okay. Posake?
Mendez and Sullivan.
Mendez and Sullivan?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay. Shribs?
Kearney and Nissler.
Okay, McDonald?
Kearney.
So we did not get a majority for anyone. We will have to do another round.
And we're hunting for two seats, is that what we're still looking for?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, this, so we're looking for two seats. We, yeah, we, we would love to get four, like a, a majority, so we can vote again with the same group, or if anyone wants to make a case for anyone, or I can take-
Yeah, I think, I think we vote again the same group.
Okay, let's go again. One moment, let me duplicate the slide. Okay, so we're still voting for two seats. Barnacle?
Mendez and Sullivan.
Kater Thompson?
Mendez and Sullivan.
Healy?
Kearney.
Posake?
Mendez and Sullivan.
Shribs?
Kearney and Nissler.
Kearney and Sullivan.
Okay, so we do, we are able to seat Catherine Sullivan there with four votes. We still do not have a majority for the other seat. I can eliminate Michael Nissler, and we can vote one more time between Kearney and Mendez.
That's appropriate.
Okay, please vote for one. Barnacle?
Mendez.
Kater Thompson?
Mendez.
Healy?
Kearney.
Posake?
Mendez.
Shribs?
Kearney.
McDonald?
Well, I'm going to vote for Kearney, but then what are we going to do?
Bring it back to the next meeting. Pardon? Bring it back to the-
Bring it back when we have a full council.
You are able to leave a, a seat vacant if you wish.
That's right, and the-
All right, and I'm looking up and down the council for another alternative solution here.
Mr. City Attorney, can we continue this to a date certain being the next council meeting?
I think next council.
I'm sorry, did you ask if you could?
Yes.
Sure, of course.
Okay.
Just to clarify, just that one seat will continue. Okay. Okay.
All right.
Then we will move on to Recreation Music and Parks Commission. Another easy one. Kate Greenspan did receive five votes, and there is one seat. So if you're comfortable with that, we'll move forward.
Good.
Again, Senior Advisory Committee, we had three qualified applicants, and they all received six votes. So we'll move forward. Transit Committee, there are three available seats. Frank Quint did receive six votes, so that's why he's highlighted there. We have a four-way, or I'm sorry, a three-way tie for the additional two seats, so we can do another vote.
Yep. Taking out Quint, taking out Alden.
So please vote for two now. Barnacle?
Tar and Vasquez.
Kater Thompson?
Tar and Vasquez.
Healy?
Anderson, Morris, and Tar.
Posake?
Anderson, Morris, and Vasquez.
Shribs?
Anderson, Morris, and Vasquez.
McDonald?
Anderson, Morris, and Tar. That's how it ended up last time. I, I'll, I'll change a vote here. I'll, I'll go Anderson, Morris, I mean, I'll go Tar and Vasquez.
Okay, so it looks like there we have Tar and Vasquez being appointed. And then we have Tree Advisory Committee. There are three seats. Two folks did receive four votes, majority vote. So I will eliminate them from the next round, as well as those receiving zero votes.
We didn't seat Barclay-Saxon earlier in the evening?
I think we did. Kami, can you look back? I think she was on-
Yes, HPCP.
Okay. Would you like me to eliminate her?
No, we leave it in there, but that's informational.
Sure, of course.
If that's all right.
So, sorry, I just wanted to go back. So we did, we did fill two of those seats, so we're just voting for one now. Barnacle? Kater Thompson? Healy?
Obaid.
Posake?
Obaid.
Shribs?
Obaid.
McDonald?
Stansel. Anybody want to change a vote? Or shall we add this to our bring back to a, a full council list? I think we'd bring it back to our full council like we're doing the other seat. So I think that's our direction. And typically, we have you populate the resolution, and I think we've heard it, and we have a video record of it, so we'll assume it's in the resolution. You're not doing resolution real, you are doing resolution real time?
That's why I have my crack team here.
Okay.
So just to confirm, we'll be coming back to you for one seat on the Tree Advisory Committee, and one seat, the shorter seat, on the Police Advisory Committee, correct? Public Safety Advisory Committee?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. We did have one other item on this, which was the Public Safety Advisory Committee Council Liaison, just for the public's edification. This will be a term that runs from now until January 2025, when annual appointments for council liaisons are made. A memo went out on June 5th. We received notices of interest from Councilmember Posake and Kater Thompson. They're included in the packet, and the mayor has recommended Councilmember Posake.
And we need a vote on, on that, right? That happens for a vote, so roll call?
Sure.
I'll just pull out and just-
Or we could have-
Yeah, let's just do that, because that's perfect.
And then we can do the vote by a claim. Everybody says, Posake, aye? Thank you.
That, yeah, so that worked for Councilmember Posake's appointment, but we'll need to do a, just a, a motion on both resolutions.
Yes.
We need public comment first.
Right, no, we've done public comment on, on this. Okay. All right, so we are at the point where we can take a motion?
So moved.
And a second, a second by Kater Thompson, and a roll call vote on the resolutions. Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Posake?
Yes.
Shribs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
And that gets us to item 10. Thank you all for being so patient in here, and congratulations to those of you who have just been appointed, and thanks to all volunteers who signed up to help the city in its mission. This next item, item 10, is the first reading of an ordinance making findings of exemption under SEQA and amending Tables 4.4 in Chapter 28, glossary of the Petaluma Implementing Zoning Ordinance, to permit onsite retail cannabis sales in up to three locations in business park and industrial zones, an introduction first reading of an ordinance amending the Petaluma Municipal Code to relate the city's cannabis regulations to a new Chapter 6.10 entitled Cannabis, and to permit onsite retail cannabis sales in accordance with the implementing zoning ordinance and adoption of- and adoption of a resolution updating the city's commercial cannabis permit regulations. To help us with this is the City Attorney, Eric Danley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council again, and good evening, members of the public. It's my pleasure to present this item to you. Caitlin, if you wouldn't mind, or Kami, whoever has it, bring up the PowerPoints. I'd appreciate it. We have a brief PowerPoint presentation, Council, to give some overview on this action. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions and obviously hear from the public. Thank you very much. If, could you go to the non-notes view and?
It's loading.
That'd be great.
One moment, let's try that again.
That's fine. Thank you for your help. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so if we could have the next slide? Thanks. So we'll start out just a quick review of the existing city cannabis regulations. They were enacted in December 2017. They reside in Chapter 10.15 of the Municipal Code. It's entitled Cannabis. And it addresses both commercial cannabis activity, as it's called, as well as personal cultivation and medicinal cannabis. It's in a single chapter. It, it provides for authorization for retail cannabis commercial activity with, in the form of delivery-only retail sales, as well as cannabis manufacturing and testing. And it permits those activities in only industrial and business park zoning districts in the city. And although, although the current regulations permit up to two delivery-only retail establishments, there's only one that is currently permitted, that actually possesses a permit. And there have been no issues reported about nuisance-related activities concerning the existing commercial cannabis activity in the city. If we could have the next slide, please. Thank you. So this graphic is, shows, shows the locations in the city where commercial cannabis activity is currently permitted and where it might be. And it takes into account the buffers that have been established and are proposed to continue to be, to apply to separate commercial cannabis uses from other uses. And those buffers are 600 feet from schools, childcare centers, 200 feet from parks, youth centers, and libraries, and 100 feet from residential uses. And that's a property line to property line. So, and hopefully everybody can see the legend. I'm going to squint to see it. So the red is business park and the blue is industrial, and those are the current locations in the city. And also, in accordance with the council's direction, the proposed locations for commercial cannabis, including storefront retail sales, if the council takes this action, where that, those could occur. But what's also shown in this graphic are Commercial 1 and Commercial 2 zones, Commercial 1 being the green, Commercial 2 being the purple, where, where the, the the buffers would, would be satisfied to, to allow commercial cannabis activity. And so you can see what that adds in the purple and the green is a potential, some potential locations by, adjacent to Lakeville Street at Caulfield. There's one little location on the boulevard, a little north of Perrin, if you can see that. And then there's, let's see, there's a location up by Old Redwood Highway that's C2 and another one just, just across Old Road Highway that's C1. So we may be referring back to this, but we wanted to show you that, that graphic to help, help show you locationally what's currently permitted. Next slide, please. So in terms of the council's direction, getting us here tonight, this has been a top 10 goal and priority of the council and starting in 2023. The council has maintained that priority focus on this action in March and April of this year. And, and the latest direction that we're responding to is for limited amendments to authorize up to three onsite storefront cannabis retail sales locations in business park and industrial zones, which we just looked at where those are located when you take into account the buffers. Next slide, please. So in terms of SEQA compliance for what are really three actions, this is a three for tonight. It's zoning ordinance amendments, municipal code amendments, and adoption of administrative regulations. But the SEQA analysis is the same for all of them. There are three different findings of exemption discussed in some detail. Those are the same ones that were presented to the Planning Commission, who recommended approval and findings of exemption on these bases. And those are for consistency with community plans and zoning, the common sense exception, and exemptions for existing facilities and new construction and conversion. So next slide, please. So starting with some discussion of the proposed zoning amendments to, to incorporate, to authorize commercial cannabis onsite retail activity in the city. This, these, this slide shows the proposed changes that will be made to the definition of retail sale and implementing zoning ordinance of the city. This is Chapter 28. The Glossary. And I don't know, I can take the time to read that if you'd like. This was also in your package. Do you have a preference, Council? Keep going. Happy to do that. I know it's late. Thank you. This, oh, let's see, is this the same? Sorry, one sec. Yeah, next slide, please. In fact, I think we'll zoom through that one because we just showed it. Next slide, please. We can return to these if you'd like. Oops, I think we missed, can we go back one? I think we're going forward instead of back. There we go. Oops, there. If we could stay at the table, yep. And so what that shows, it's probably hard for you to see, is the change to the permitted use table to permit retail sales in business park and industrial zones. And also, the reference, there's the cross-reference to the chapter in the municipal code to which we're proposing to relocate the municipal code regulations. I'll explain why when we get there. And what I'll add, and we're not showing on the slide, is there, there are a bunch of notes that follow this table in the zoning ordinance, and that is where the, the buffers reside. That's where they're listed, in that part of the zoning ordinance. Okay, next slide, please. Thank you. And Council, please feel free to stop me, but I, I know it's late and I want to cover this and then we can get to the, your deliberations and.
Just a quick question on that?
Yes.
On the map, you have C1 and C2 as being possible, but here they're eliminated in the last table.
Right, so, so I think there was some desire on the part of the member to see whether, what, what expanding the permitted zones would get us, and so we wanted to show you that. But so far, the direction of majority of the council, as far as we're aware, coming into tonight, has been to leave the permitted areas to be business park and industrial. So that's, so that was informational, but the package we've presented to you would permit commercial cannabis activity, as, as is currently the case, only in business park and industrial. And we would have to make, there's a number of changes that we'd have to make in this package to change that because it shows up in a bunch of different places.
Okay, so adding C1 or C2 according to the map part would be a much heavier lift than just, than what we have now.
I'm not going to say it's a much heavier lift. It, it gets you a slight change locationally. And I, we'd have to do some careful edits to the package. I'd probably want to bring it back to you to make sure we got that and also to address any further questions you had.
And we want to review the map later and maybe have talked to Council. Thank you.
Can I ask also one question? Is that a revision that can be made between first reading and second reading?
No, because it's substantive.
If we direct it this evening, was it possible to pass a first reading with that?
Yeah, I think that's clear enough. In other words, you take that action tonight.
We'll come back around to that. I just wanted to know.
Yes.
If that was a possibility.
But, but it wouldn't be one that you could introduce it as is and then we could change it between now and then. You'd have to take that action tonight.
I had a question on the slide that had the yellow and green highlighting. If we could go back to that.
Sure.
No, let's text. Yeah.
Sorry, I skipped over it.
Would we be able to say up to three different premises? But could we say with a maximum of two on either side of the freeway?
I mean, short answer, yes. But I, we'd want to look factually to make sure that you actually had, it looks like you do have that option. Let me see. Yes, I think we want to state a little bit, I think, in other words, could you say? I'm sorry, say that again, Councilmember Healy, I'll make sure.
So the, the total number for the city would be a maximum of three, but no more than two on either side of Highway 101.
And keeping the maximum, the total maximum three.
Correct.
Okay. Yes, yes.
Yeah, we're just in the questions.
Yeah, no, I'm just, and I'm.
Spitting on a little here. Please, please, keep going with the rest.
It's just an interrelated package I'm having to think through.
Because you have the word and, comma, and, a maximum. So whether that's inclusive or exclusive and, so that we have three plus two or, or two as a subset of the three. Is, is the language is not clear there to me. So that's something to think about. We could have five operations, three retail and two.
No, well.
According to what I'm reading.
You mean, you mean taking into account delivery only and onsite?
We could have two deliveries that are completely separate from the three retail.
That's correct.
And do we want?
And our understanding is.
If it's three max, because, anyway, let's discuss that because I would think the intent was three maximum, two could deliver, a three maximum total.
Okay, so our understanding coming into tonight, which could be wrong, of course, is that the council direction was to continue to, continue with the regulations we have, so continue to permit up to two retail delivery-only businesses and to add authorization for up to three different and potentially separate onsite retail sales locations for a maximum of retail locations of five. And that's what we provided.
That was not my, that was not my understanding.
So I will, I will try and track each of the questions that might be modifications so that the council as a whole will debate them when you finish the presentation.
Right, and I'm just trying to answer, I'm not.
And you don't have a wingman tracking these things for you tonight? Or do you?
We're, I'm, I'm tracking.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, and just one, one more about numbers here for the same purpose. You have it within city, and you may want to say within city influence because we have a cannabis store right outside our city limits?
No, we can't regulate outside the city, Councilmember. Yeah, so that's not something we can address in these regulations.
Okay, but something we, we just talked about, bring it up, let's, some things we can say about it.
I can explain more if there are questions about that. And remember too, whatever are the numbers the council ultimately arrives at, they're maximums, they're not minimums. There's no entitlements at all, right? So just because there could be up to five doesn't mean necessarily there will be five or would need to be.
But we'd leave that as, as staff discretionary permitting review. The permits don't come back through council, do they?
That, that's the way, that's what we're envisioning currently, yes.
No further counsel, so.
Because, because.
So we won't be involved in whether there's a minimum.
No, and, and for example, it could be that, as, as has been the case historically, is there's either insufficient interest or insufficient ability to meet all the requirements to, to have the maximum, maximum permissible number of businesses. The same could be true for onsite retail. Okay, so let's see, where were we?
Two slides forward and a half.
If we, are we okay to move on in this slide?
Yes, very.
Awesome. The next one is slide nine, please. There we go. General Plan Consistency Findings. I'm not going to go through those in detail. They're in the package. They're the same ones that were made by the Planning Commission. They recommended the council make the same ones. This is, again, these are requirements in order to, in, in accordance with our zoning ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance. And they're based on existing principles in the zoning ordinance. About, that are, that are policy considerations about approved land uses. Next slide, please. Similarly, there are general plan consistency findings that also need to be made to support the, the proposed zoning ordinance amendments, including regarding greenhouse gas. Well, they need not be made on these topics, but these are items of consistency that the Planning Commission found in this findings in this package too. Also regarding economic sustainability in two different respects, regarding diverse retail and, and locating retail uses appropriate to their types in the sites. Next slide, please. And I think that's the last finding, let me just be sure. Yes. So also findings of consistency with the public necessity, convenience, and welfare. And those are the same ones that were for the Planning Commission too. And they concern job opportunities and tax revenue, opportunities for local access to cannabis products, which helps reduce trips and greenhouse gas emissions. And then taking into account potential impacts on what we might refer to in, in the zoning context as sensitive receptors. And so proximity to schools, childcare centers, parks, youth centers, libraries, and residentially zoned areas. And those are reflected in the buffers. Next slide, please. So now we shift to talking about the proposed amendments to the municipal code, the city's police power regulations that would accompany the proposed zoning amendments that would, that would set up the land use changes needed to accommodate the police power regulations to allow storefront retail cannabis. And so those, just to summarize them at a high level, we're proposing to relocate the chapter from Chapter 1015 to a new Chapter 6.10. And that's because the cannabis regulations currently reside in the, in a section of the code that focuses on potential threats to health, safety, and welfare. And our understanding is that part of this change is to continue to de-stigmatize cannabis and so moving it to business regulations in a new chapter in Title VI. We, in this package, we have updated the purposes to also give more express mention of the commercial purposes for these regulations that are also balanced with, and, and we would be retaining the public safety purposes. So both, both sets of considerations reflected in the purposes. Section, the newly renumbered Section 6.10.040 concerning delivery only would have language added to it, which we'll look at in a second, to distinguish delivery-only retail sales from storefront retail sales, but also to recognize that they could occur at the same place and address where, how those, how that would count toward the maximum number of, of locations permitted. We're adding a new 6.10.040 Paragraph E to expressly authorize up to three storefront retail sales locations. And then we would recommend adjusting, amending the savings clause in Section 6.10.080 to make sure there's no implication of potential conflicts with the state's existing medicinal cannabis regulations. So next, next slide, please. So now we're going to focus on the, the language and, and the proposed language in the municipal amendments. So this would be added language, the existing language that authorizes delivery-only retail sales. That wouldn't change. But we would add language to address the fact that it could be that in the future, retail onsite sales could occur in the same business that's also providing delivery only. And if so, then, then the current restrictions for delivery-only business on things like signage. And if so, then, then the current restrictions for delivery only business on things like signage and labeling would, it wouldn't make sense for them to apply, obviously. And we want to address how that combined site would count toward the maximum locations permitted in the regulations. And I'll move on unless there's questions with that. I think that makes sense. Next slide, please. Oops, went back. Thanks. So this would be the new paragraph E. That's pretty short and sweet and this would be the authorization for up to three different locations for storefront retail cannabis sales onsite. Next slide, please. Also in this package is a resolution by which the council could approve updated administrative regulations that also have been updated to correspond with all these other changes and to address to preserve most of our existing administrative regulations because they've been quite successful with the existing business and a lack of nuisance problems. But to, to address the fact that the new regulations would allow onsite retail sales. And I will note that the, the resolution has been prepared so as to authorize the city manager to amend those administrative regulations as appropriate, which we wanted to do because we have yet to prepare the solicitation and the ranking criteria for, for the, for the onsite retail sales that is intended to be based on the process we used previously, but we need to consider what changes may be necessary to accommodate these new businesses. And, and those may warrant revisiting some of the administrative regulations or in the future, in the process of authorizing the new businesses, it may also be desirable to update the regulations. So that's why we're recommending providing that authorization to the city manager to propagate those. And the administrative regulations, as we note in this slide, are authorized under the existing section 10.15.090, which would also be renumbered if the council takes this action along with the other ones to reside in title six in the municipal code, but with the same section number. So that concludes our brief overview and takes us to the last slide, which is the question slide. And we'll be happy to answer any of those that the council has. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. That was a whirlwind tour through this. Appreciate that. And really appreciate you getting it in front of the council at this point, hitting one of our top goals. So bringing it up here to the dais for a few questions. And I'd like to start with the vice mayor.
Just besides the earlier ones, just in that last slide, when you say staff's sole discretion. And so my concern is if there's like, how that is done, who's doing it, which department is doing it? And who has the final say on that within the staff and that process? So that's something we want to at least have some discussion or find out about a little bit more from city council as to the qualities that we're looking for and the evaluation form and the criteria that's being done. So I think we want the staff to do most of that, but I think at some point we may want to bring, I'd like to hear from the other council members if they would like to see some of that so that we have some say or in the process.
Sure. We, let's see. The way this is prepared, right, previously it was the police chief's decision to grant a permit in the regulations and that's been replaced with city instead. The understanding being that it would be the, the city manager or her delegate to do that. In terms of who will be working on that, it will be the community development department, the economic development and open government department, which has been the department that has, Ingrid and her team had been responsible for the prior regulations and the permitting process and facilitating that. Also, it'll be the police department and my office to, to update the solicitation process as needed and to institute it so that we can get applications, review them and then make decisions on those that best meet the regulations. When we say sole discretion, that's something, a term of art that we use with the council too. And that's what, that's intended to make it extremely clear that there's no right to a permit. There's going to be a discretionary decision made and that is relevant to potential protests or challenges to the decision. And it's not to try to suggest that the council doesn't have a say.
The problem I have with what you've just said ran through is there's so many departments that this has to go through and so many committees and so much approvals right through. It could be delay, 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 delay.
No, that.
And so I just want to.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, and, and I understand what you might think in terms of, in a serial process, but we don't envision a serial process. We envision a collaborative, multidisciplinary process one time where we put together that package like, like we did this work that's coming before you tonight. This is, this is the community development department. This is Ingrid's working on the administrative regulations. Police department reviewing and me too, to get this legislative package before you. And so we'll do the same thing about the solicitation package like we do with development applications so that we don't piecemeal applicants and we have one solid package. We, we were sort of trying to think, you know, timeframe wise. It was the mayor who was guessing, well, anything takes 90 days. Can you do it within 90 days? We thought we could. It sort of depends on the response we get and how much time applicants need. The, the security regulations, the safety regulations have been kept the same. I think they're pretty thorough. I looked, but the police will double check before we release, you know, the rules. The way the law works in terms of city permits and especially ones that are not land use permits, and these really are not, interestingly. These are, these are not conditional use permits that run with the land. These are permits, the way they've operated is they're permits that are granted on a discretionary basis for an entity that demonstrates they can satisfy the city's requirements and that needs to be annually renewed. And the reason for that is if there are problems, it doesn't even need to be revoked. It just, it will just expire. I mean, it could be revoked, but that's a mechanism for ensuring they're not problem businesses. But anyway, we plan on it being a joint and efficient multidisciplinary process to get the package ready for the, for the invitations to go out and also to review and approve them. And it was purposely moved from, to a civilian decision from the police department decision, even though they're, they're the best experts to review and make sure that our security requirements still are appropriate for supporting, safely supporting onsite cannabis. So anyway, that's, that's what we see.
Thank you. Okay, other questions? Councilwoman Kate Thompson.
A quick question on the purple areas on the map. And I see that there's one now off Maria, not Maria Drive, but in the shopping center there.
Clerk's team, could we put the map back up just so?
It's Washington Square there. The mattress store. The mattress store on the corner of Washington and. And the bank.
You mean?
What was the nightclub?
Are you focused on the one up by Old Redwood Highway?
Well, okay, start with that one. What, what exact site is that?
Are you able to tell, Andrew?
I'm wondering if I should put up the GIS map.
Or just zoom this far? I mean, we can see the cross streets there.
Yeah, sure.
It's Redwood Highway and.
It's 5101 Montero Way. It's my building.
Okay.
It was to showcase the motor cars next to the casino.
Oh, okay.
5101 Montero.
Thanks, Andrew.
I'm just curious why the Cattlemen's site is not on here.
It, because of a buffer problem. Is that right, Andrew?
That's correct. We've, we've identified Headwaters Academy, which is located here at 1355 Industrial Avenue. So it's the Cattlemen's site, the boundary of, of the property would be within 600 feet of Headwaters Academy.
So can you tell me more about the Headwaters Academy? I mean, isn't it?
Well, from what we understand based upon the information on the website, it's a Sonoma County Office of Education facility that offers alternative education programs for middle school to high school students who are not able to attend regular classrooms.
Okay, because I'd like to know a little bit more about that because I think the Cattlemen's site is a, is an opportunity site. And I know where this SCO site is on industrial. It just seems like it's a missed opportunity. And then and then I'm kind of curious when, if you're going down East Washington Street, if you're say, Payren and Wilson Street. I mean, is there a reason why there's a building where Starbucks is?
Let me see here.
Because you know, we keep talking about greenhouse gases and every one of these are not really walkable.
I've got too much turned on and I'm losing my, my bearings.
You're saying, you're making a suggestion that that's a viable space?
That that's a viable space.
It's the one across from Whole Foods, essentially, right in that area?
Not Whole Foods, it's across from Wendy's on the same side of the street.
So we're going to be.
West.
This is going to be Washington. So we've got some residential buffers. We've got some, it looks like childcare buffers. We've got quite a few different buffers going on in that area.
I just feel like we're so limited and I keep bringing this up. Whenever I go up to Davis, like two blocks out, you know, within the downtown, there's just a house. And nobody's ever loitering in front of it. I think it's short sighted.
Well, so, you know, we're, we're here to get direction. We are, have presented a package that preserves the existing buffers. And this, thanks, thanks, Andrew. That's a much better way to show, you know, what the effect of the buffers is. And we may need to refer back to that, but that, that's why we're presenting these locations. Because of that analysis and the, and the council's direction so far, but you know, you're the council.
Councilman Barnacle.
Would, would someone submitting a proposal be required to pay a fee just to have their proposal reviewed?
Yes.
Do you know how much that would be?
No, because I don't think we've done the analysis for this kind of an application in terms of what the staff time is going to be. But that would certainly be part of what we'd need to be establishing and releasing as part of the invitation.
Okay. And then obviously they would pay a fee to then have their, if they were awarded, they would pay another fee to be, become, to get their permit?
No, it would just be the processing cost.
Got you. So someone, so say we get 10 proposals, we're going to pick three of them. We, we collect fees from 10 of the, all 10 proposals. But the three of them are, you know, good to go after that.
Right, because the council so far has indicated they're not, you're not interested in, in seeking, you know, a cannabis tax or that kind of fee generation or revenue generation, but rather relying on the sales tax and other benefits. And, and, and so that would mean that application fees are for the, recovery, the cost of, of doing the processing.
Would we consider rather than making pay with a proposal to make the awarded bidders pay for their permit? Because for a small operator to pay for a speculative proposal versus paying for their permit, it's it's somewhat prohibitive.
Well, but, but what that, in practice, that works as a subsidy, so we might be spending the staff time and not recovering the cost.
And we're going to make hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in tax revenue off this. That's.
I'm not, I'm totally not debating the policy choice. I'm just saying.
I'm saying there's a, there's a return on, on that subsidy, I guess, is my point, right? And if we eliminate small operators because they can't pay the yet to be determined fee for the, just to submit a proposal.
Yeah, I just, so again, totally not trying to insert myself into the council's policymaking decisions. But I, I don't, if, if we're just recovering the cost of the staff time, I would be concerned about the viability, concerned that couldn't pay that, that cost because it's not going to be a huge cost. It's not going to be like, you know, some kind of retail pricing scheme. It's going to be just cost recovery. And I don't know, Andrew, if we even, do we know what the current? I mean, unfortunately.
Can you give me an order? Is it a $5,000 fee with your proposal? Is it a $1,000 fee? Is it a $20,000 fee?
I think it's like. Thanks. I was going to say half a 5K, so that's.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And so, and I apologize, neither Ingrid nor Brian were able to be here, so I'm having to cover a lot. But thanks for your understanding.
Questions? I do have a question now. If, if we permit in a cannabis retail and then a childcare or a school or SCO wants to change their property, does that have a retroactive impact on the cannabis or is it that once, once they're in with clearance in a site, their business is stable, is, is secure from city changes?
That's a good question. We don't have setbacks to apply, that apply to the other uses, Andrew, right? There's no buffers to apply to the other uses. You know, the permit's the permit. But there's the issue of, well, if it's annually expiring and renewing, how do we, how do we address that? That's a good question. If.
If it does, and there's, if there's nothing that readdresses the cannabis business, then my point is safe. The business is safe unless there's, you, you can't prevent a school from coming in there, but you also can't bump the cannabis business that's established. So the cannabis business remains.
I think what we might need to do, and we haven't done, is to provide for some, some kind of vesting if you want that effect.
Is it, is it a natural impact without?
I think we just have to clarify.
In a CUP, you'd get natural vesting, but from this, you don't get natural vesting. So I think we'd actually, if that's the council's direction, and it's a very sensible direction. I'm right now kind of wishing we would map that through, but.
So maybe it would be in, in the the regulations or reasons for which a permit might be revoked, we would exclude that there would be a protected use that would, would commence operation within a buffer that would otherwise be required.
But we'd also have to be saying that the buffers wouldn't apply to, to permits already granted so long as they continue in compliance.
I think you want to put that in there then is what you're saying.
So, so we, so that would really potentially require tweaking the notes in the zoning ordinance, you know, that follow the permitted use table that lists the buffers. We might have to say something about for, for, for new, not granted applications or something.
An action taken between readings?
Pardon me?
Can you take that, can you make that, succeed with that between first and second reading?
If you direct it.
So we'll get around to what we're actually directing here.
Right, right, but that's a very good question and.
Do we have a hard definition for school in here?
I'm sorry?
Do we have a hard definition for what a school is? Like all the whack things that might show up. Is it, is a driving school for 16-year-olds a school?
That is a good question too. Is that in our glossary?
I'm not sure if it's in our glossary, but I know the state cannabis regulations define that, so we can, we can check.
Following on Councilmember Kate Thompson's concern is this continuing ed school, if it's a turn in your homework once a week school, is that what the council wishes to put barriers on?
Well, the presumption of these regulations is it's a place where Well, the presumption of these regulations is it's a place where school H youth are.
Every day.
Where they are, and if, if the council says every day, you know, again, you're the legislative body, but right now, the thing is...
Well, that's why I asked if we have a definition, if we don't have a definition, I might suggest to council that we just use the term every day.
I think we have to check on that in the background.
Yes.
Go ahead.
John, jump in.
Yeah, my question is, have you actually talked to SCO to find out what, what that building's used for? Okay, great.
So as mentioned, it's an alternative education site, there's students from multiple municipalities, multiple grades, but it's 12 through 18. Generally, there's two classrooms, it functions with a teacher, instructions, they're, they're daily, they also have a bus stop kind of in front of Denny's where most of the students get off, then they walk over to the campus, but it is occupied during the regular school year. We respond out there for general calls for service like we do in any of our other schools.
I appreciate that clarification.
Excuse us, Chief Miller, you're very popular.
Since, since you're already up there at the podium, and we're talking about numbers of things, so if we're talking about three locations, three operators, three total storehouses of cannabis versus possibly five, and then there's a, the other possibility is we could have five different locations of storage, five different operators, and even one right outside of town, so basically six, is that your, what you're anticipating as a possibility, or what is your preference? Would you like to have it down to three total operations within the sphere of influence, three op, three locations that you actually have to kind of make, keep tabs on, and also for competition, whether or not the maximum of three within the buying power of Petaluma? So from your perspective, from a safety point of view, what, what is it, did your, how you're interpreting this?
So I think some of those are a little, little unfair of a question for asking me for my personal preference. I will say that some of our neighboring agencies have upwards of, over 25. I think that we have seen an evolution in our safety response to cannabis and cannabis-related issues. I think that what we've learned from some of our other establishments is proper oversight and proper management and proper protocols and safety security initiatives really can handle proper business models, so, and speaking with our neighboring allied agencies, they have problematic locations because there's problematic ownership and problematic security plans, and we've seen that in other business models here recently. So I think that, you know, as we've spoken to tonight, and the city attorney referenced, we have a cannabis provider here locally that's demonstrated a proficient business model, and we have had no calls for service, and have had greater impacts from other businesses elsewhere in the city. That being said, I think that you all have a decision to be made on what the appropriate number may be, and I think you've heard some recommendations and considerations related to buffers. I think that we are sensitive, as we've seen and spoken to earlier this evening, about neighborhoods and proximity to certain locations and establishments and the impacts of that. Those are challenges for my staff to address, so just being thoughtful there, but I think we can manage, and we wouldn't have put in front of you a recommendation as proposed tonight if we didn't think it was going to be suitable or, or something we could handle.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we're back to staff on the next question. And the question be, what's our timeline here? What's a reasonable expectation to soliciting applicants to, to this process? And then, you know, when would, when would we have a reasonable determination of successful applicants? How, how long that process?
Well, I think we would, our goal would be to do, do our interdisciplinary work that we do and try to have that in that 90-day timeframe.
To approving or, or soliciting for?
Yes.
Wow, okay, thank you very much.
I mean, that, that, that would be our focus, I mean, you know, I, I, it'll be great if I don't hear the phrase "foot dragging" from the council again about homework in our office, so we'd like to avoid that, and we're glad to be at this point.
Okay, thank you very much, good, good, appreciate that. And with that, I'd like to open public comment on the item and turn it over to our clerk here.
Yes, we did receive two public comments, which are posted to the website, and I'll read the instructions. Members of the, members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. A timer behind the dials will be reset for each speaker. We do have some cards.
Our first speaker tonight will be Jamie Reagan, to be followed by Mike Getlin.
Hi, my name is Jamie Reagan, I am the owner-operator of Down Under Industries. My business has been established in Petaluma since 2019, and I just want to reiterate, as I've said many times before, I am a Petaluma dispensary, I have a Petaluma address, I already pay sales tax to Petaluma, and I want to be considered one of the three recommendations. Allowing more than three additional dispensaries and another delivery service would potentially have a negative impact, and I don't think that is the intention of the city council to phase me out of the city of Petaluma. I think it would also be wise to have established boundaries of how close each dispensary can be to one another, to allow for accessibility across our city versus having them all bunched into one territory. I don't think that is going to be beneficial to the community to have very limited locations allowed for dispensaries, and, you know, for intents and purposes of what the application process looked like, for me, it was very lengthy. It took almost two years to get permitted, it cost just the permit alone upwards of $25,000. The initial deposit was, I think, $10,500, which, I'm not a gambler, but I took a big leap of faith, knowing that Sonoma County was going to allow nine dispensaries when I applied. Since each jurisdiction has changed and on-boarded more dispensaries, and that obviously has had some negative impacts in some cities, and some operators have not conformed to stricter security policy to prohibit, you know, issues with theft or crime, but we have been good operators, and I just want you to consider us as a Petaluma operator here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Getlin, to be followed by Brandon Levine.
Thank you, Mayor McDonnell, and members of the council, my name's Mike Getlin, I am Director of Public Affairs and Licensing for Nectar Markets. We operate 47 retail dispensaries across California, Oregon, and Ohio, and are very excited about the opportunity to do some work here in Petaluma. A couple of quick comments. In my role, having integrated dispensaries and into communities of every imaginable type across the country, first of all, a lot of wonderful work has been done by staff here, and this is a very thoughtful process that we've been watching closely for some time. And also, thanks to the folks at Down Under Industries, who've obviously been working hard to prove to this community for years that cannabis is not damaging and in fact can bring benefits. A couple of very quick comments. It's very important that those C1 and C2 sites be included in the zoning map for cannabis. Couple of reasons for that, when, having done site selection all over the country, this is one of the most restrictive zoning maps I've ever seen, even including those C1 and C2 zoning spots. The likelihood of retailers being stacked kind of in the back of business parks, and thus not being able to meet their long-term financial obligations is very high. One of the critical things to keep in mind is that unfortunately, Petaluma already has about eight marijuana retailer brick-and-mortar stores, they're just not licensed. We can walk into smoke and vape stores and buy intoxicating products right now, most of them without ID check, and so bringing licensed legal cannabis into the city will start a bit of a turf war between those of us who are paying taxes, checking IDs, selling tested safer products, and those that are not. So if we're stuck back in the back of business parks without access to those commercial corridors, we will be forced to compete at a distinct disadvantage, because at the end of the day, these are convenience stores that we are opening, and they require convenient locations, convenient access, et cetera. Finally, there'll be large holding costs for companies like ours looking to come in and invest in build-outs, so, again, we're, we're appreciative of the city attorney's efforts to make the timeline as short as possible. And then, yes, please do grandfather and sensitive use buffers, it would, we have seen in one instance, a, a less-than-scrupulous actor coming in and starting a school next to a dispensary so as to remove their competition from the playing field. Such things have happened in the past, fortunately, I don't think that happens in this good city, but, but worth considering. Happy to answer any questions and be a resource, and appreciate the work staff has done on this, thanks.
Thank you. Brandon Levine, to be followed by Nick Caston.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the community. I'm Brandon Levine, sorry, CEO of Mercy Wellness and more than 10 other cannabis brands locally-owned, or locally-run. I was born and raised in Sonoma County. I've been licensed by the city of Cotati for 14 years now, since 2010, in full compliance. We've had no calls from the police department, so I can tell you from experience, this can be done right in the city if you guys make sure to put everything in order during the process of approving the applications. A few things about us, I'm 100% self-funded, I'm not big corporation, I have no debt, I have no partners, and we have a ton of experience. I've been through two 280E audits, which most people can't say that they even know what 280E is, it's a, a big hurdle for cannabis, so I have an extensive education unwillingly learned in tax law. I'd like to offer a personal tour to each one of you to take a look at what a well-run operation looks like, whether you choose us or not during this process, I'm, I'm an open book, I want to make sure that you guys have a clear view of what can be operating in your city. I expect this to be a fair and transparent process, I'm watching how you guys are rolling this out, and I believe that that's going to be something that we'll see happen on, on your guys' part. I think that some of the zoning, does, the proposed zoning does fall in line with the needs for the community, I think C1, C2 make a lot of sense, sounds like her building is, I know the building well because of the classic car operation there. Stuff like that works well for the community because it's out of sight, standalone building, lots of parking. From experience, I can tell you parking is one of the biggest negative impacts on the community, because you get a lot of people coming in and out of there, and underserved parking lot, and it's definitely has its impact. Coming to Petaluma for the last 45 years of my life, I've watched parking be a really big setback on actually why I want to come downtown, because I drive around and looking for parking, looking for parking, and it's like, okay, how many times do I do that before I find somewhere else to eat? Like I said, I want to make sure that you guys know that there's an open invitation, I'm going to give my contact information to the clerk, and urge you guys to move forward with this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Caston, to be followed by Claire Firestone.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, thank you for your time tonight and your service, it's greatly appreciated. We're very happy to see this process move forward, we've had the pleasure of speaking with many of you and your predecessors, and the many years that this has been a priority for the city, and we're glad to see action. I also, on behalf of soleful, want to express our interest in moving to Petaluma. We're a locally-owned dispensary, in addition to our local ownership, we source all of our sun-grown flower, which we exclusively sell, sun-grown flower, no indoor flower is sold in our facilities, and all of that is sourced from local farms within the North Bay and the Emerald Triangle. So we have a shorter carbon footprint from our supply chain all the way through to the ethos of our customers. As a part of that, we encourage you heavily to include C1 and C2. Good operators and good security plans are two parts of a safe environment, good locations are the foundation for that. You need to have eyes on a facility to have a safe facility. It's why an Apple Store, a Lululemons, which also suffer from the same criminal rings that target cannabis, because it's property crimes and not cannabis crimes, all source there, or all go into locations that are inherently safe in the beginning because there's eyes on the facilities, and that's commercial districts. So we encourage you to include the C1 and C2, it's the places that retail's intended to be. Cannabis manufacturing would not make sense there, that makes sense in industrial. Cannabis distribution does not make sense there, that makes sense in industrial. Cannabis retail makes sense in commercial, because that's where retail belongs. As a part of that, we'd encourage you to change your buffers to be based off of the premise, not the parcel. The premise on a property is what is licensed by the state, and it's what is consistently reviewed from the local jurisdiction all the way up when we're getting our approvals, and the distance from the premise is how you're judging the distance from the use, whereas a parcel is arbitrary, because you can have many suites on a parcel, it can be multiple acres, it can be a quarter acre, you could have four parcels next to each other, a quarter acre, there's no consistency in that. The premise distance from the sensitive use will give you a consistent understanding of how far the facility is going to be from the actual sensitive use you're looking to restrict from. So we strongly encourage you to make those minor alterations, it sounds like you're going to already have to make the change around the renewals not being based on the buffer, so if you make the buffer based off where the premise is, that will free up more of the space, include the commercial districts, that'll create safe locations for us to open professional operations, and then we hope to be considered as one of the operators when you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire Firestone, to be followed by Teresa Twami.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Claire Firestone, and I am an owner and representative of Farmhouse Artisan Market, a local family-owned and operated company. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for all the time and effort you have dedicated to this important topic. Six years ago, our business was proud to be the first city-permitted and state-licensed retailer in Petaluma. Since then, we have operated within the delivery-only model, navigating the many challenges and changes the cannabis industry has faced since legalization. During this period, we have witnessed significant fallout in the delivery-only business model. Despite this, we have embraced the challenge of competing with our local counterparts. We are incredibly grateful that the city is now creating a path for us to potentially compete on a level playing field with other retailers in Sonoma County. In light of this progress, I respectfully request that you consider updating the operating hours to align with the state's allowable hours of 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. This change would greatly benefit Petaluma businesses and allow the best service for our community. Thank you for your consideration, we love the city and are excited for what the future holds. Thank you again for your time and energy.
Thank you. And Teresa Twami.
You guys seen me here seven years ago, I recognize all of you except for some. I own the Showcase of Motor Cars. I bought the building in 1993, and in 1993, it wasn't set up for an automobile dealership, but the board allowed it to happen. It was successful for many, many, many years. And when we ended up going through eminent domain, as you know with Caltrans, they turned the front of my building to the back of the building, and the back of the building now sits in a hole, you don't see the building, we have buffers all the way around the building. Even though it's C2, my driveway goes privately all the way to the business park, and during the lawsuit with eminent domain, it was determined my property was in the business park, even though it was C2. Everybody knows the building, it's a destination building, it's perfect for cannabis. Seven years ago, we came in front of you, we had an applicant for the putt-putt golf. It took three years before the putt-putt golf was approved, they ran out of money. Three and a half years ago, Eagle Eye Cannabis came to you guys. Three and a half years ago, Eagle Eye Cannabis came to you guys and asked to go into my building. I had a lease with him for three and a half years. He wanted to be in my building in such an unbelievable way. And his institution was unbelievable. I visited it personally. It was beautiful. Security, everything in place. Today, I had an opportunity to go visit Mercy. Beautiful, security, everything. Since my building's been vacant for seven years, we've had vandalism. We've had the police department out there many times. The police department actually sometimes has to park in my parking lot. I'm asking you to please consider my building, even though it's C2. The driveway goes to the business park. It's considered the business park, and I'd be honored to have any one of these professional companies in my building. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's our last speaker, and that closes public comment for the evening. And I'd like to bring it back to council for their thoughts on the matter. And who would like to lead off?
Do you want a motion to continue?
And I'd love to have a motion to continue.
Okay, you got one.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. And can we do a claim vote on this? Yes. So, on a claim vote, all those in favor of continuing, say aye. Aye, thank you. We appreciate wisdom there. And back to council for comments on this. Who wants to lead off? Councilmember Barnacle?
Sure. Appreciate staff bringing this back. I wouldn't quite say that this is an example of a timely process, because it's been three years. But I'm happy to see it. I will note, I certainly think that we need to have the commercial districts in. Just June 12, 2024, article, Soleful closes Montgomery Village location and joins other cannabis. Quote, "It's definitely more walkable in Heelsburg. We're excited about that." None of these locations are walkable. I understand, like, we've got some good corridor access and things like that, but we're definitely leaving out any walkability of these things. And it just flies in the face of anything convenient, as someone said. I think that's a great way to talk about it. This is a convenience store, or it should be. So I definitely want to include the commercial districts. You know, and I just like hearing, you know, this is one of the most restrictive zoning maps the person's ever seen. I don't think we need to introduce any additional regulations for how many businesses need to be on which side of the highway. I think that the market's going to bear that out. Personally, I'm not too concerned about having delivery businesses here because I think, you know, if we have delivery businesses here, it feels like it's basically a distribution center, you know, and a home base that's more businesses. So I'm not too concerned about having two delivery businesses and three retail shops or whatnot. I mean, in general, I just, I feel like it's, you know, long overdue. I feel that we should, we shouldn't make people pay to submit a proposal. We should make people pay for a permit. I can't think of other examples of where I've had to, like, pay for, to submit a proposal to be considered to help generate thousands of dollars for someone. It feels like we should ask for proposals, review them based on the merit, and we should select businesses that are going to be, you know, good operators, are going to generate good profits for our city, for their business, and they're going to be sustainable. And I certainly don't want to introduce any additional fees in this process, other than beyond what we need to. And, you know, those are my comments.
I've been kind of tracking where everything's headed for the evening, and I'm wondering if I can get you to start the bidding on what you think a reasonable fee would be, you have an order of magnitude on reasonable fee.
I'll let staff talk about what a reasonable fee is associated with processing a permit. But I don't think that reviewing proposals is something that we should be charging for. I think that we should be charging for processing the permit application.
So our model is just our planning process, where we either recover the cost with the application fees, or we subsidize. So that's where that's coming from. And it's, and that's based on the actual staff time cost. It's not something we just, you know.
Right. Where I'm heading to on this one is it's not a cost recovery on the process. There's so much startup process and everything else in this process that in this first round, a nominal fee, whatever that turns out to be, rather than cost recoveries, where I would direct.
So I'm more worried about the supportability of that practice when it's not based on cost, because then it's, because we are generally constrained.
It is also my.
We didn't charge the landlords when we rolled out our tenant protection ordinance. Right? We did that. We funded that internally.
Because that was regulation, and they still, there are certain kinds of approvals that they need to pay for. So that's different from, do you see what I mean?
Maybe awarded bidders pay a fee. That feels right, that you pay a fee if you're awarded, like, the opportunity to be here. But I don't think that to be considered, you should do that. I mean, they're going to generate thousands of dollars in tax revenue for us.
So again, I totally appreciate the logic of that from a policy standpoint. But if you think of our fee programs, our development impact fees, those are based on nexus studies and the cost of the infrastructure that they're funding. The master service fee schedule that the council recently acted upon, for some of which are development-related, and most of which are, many of which are facilities-related, those are all based on cost-to-service studies, because we're.
Do you wish, do you have a ballpark figure we can? I think we have a fear of a high figure, and you have a fear of a low figure. What kind of number are you?
I have a fear of an arbitrary figure. So I think what we've been charging is about 2,500 bucks, and I think there was some analysis that was done to arrive at that amount, because there's a bunch of process. And we can certainly come back with what that looks like for this. I would think it would be comparable. I mean, you can see how surgical the minutes are.
The difference between submitting a project application, Eric, and moving through the process is that there's, like, predictability in that process and that existing regulations you're going through. It's not like I'm competing against nine other organizations. I don't know what they're submitting for this coveted, like, one thing.
Well, it'll be public, and also, everybody will have the same ground rules, and also.
I understand that, but it's a different thing than, like, having one. We don't have five applications for one site, right? Like, that's the, like, if we were doing a, if we were doing a competition with one of our properties, our city properties, let's say the Casa Grande Hotel site, and we invite five developers to submit applications, that is what we're talking about here. We're not talking about a developer submitting one application and for one thing, and moving that through the process.
Okay.
Right.
So I.
But staff are going to, so there's going to be background checks. Staff are going to, we're going to have to do that. They're going to do the same review for each applicant. And then it's kind of like, it's a little bit akin to when we have competitive bids, and staff have to do the full responsiveness and responsibility review for the apparent low bid. So all I'm saying is that work is real. It's not some kind of what-the-traffic-will-bear thing in terms of how we're approaching it, and staff will have to spend.
And we agree. We just have a finite way of looking at it. We hear what you're saying. We're saying that we want it to be finite thing. And I'm going to let.
Sure.
Are you weighing in on this, the fee aspect of this?
And you're saying it's based on cost recovery, but that the applicant is, like, is it a fee that they pay? Or is it a cost recovery thing?
So I don't think it's been a cost recovery count. I think it's been a set amount based on the estimate of what it's going to generally cost to do this stuff.
But we haven't established what that fee's going to be?
Not for this. I believe someone said it's currently 2,500. I think that's right. And again, I apologize, because I don't administer that part.
And I believe he's offered to bring the fee back to us. So I think that is a proper resolution for the moment. And over to Councilmember Barn, Posake.
Yeah, just a couple, I mean, Eric, we do choose to subsidize parks and rec fees, right? I mean.
We don't have to charge any fees.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make the point, we do subsidize some fees, number one.
That's a good point.
And number two, that if we're trying to support equity, you know, I think that leads to something like Councilmember Barnacle's suggesting, you know. I don't know what's right, and I'd like to see the, I think it's good to get a figure for how much the time is costing.
Okay. And you were wrapping. I was going to ask you to weigh in also on Councilmember Strib's idea of this 3 plus 2, like, is written? Or were you thinking 3 was the total number? Were you 3 plus 2? Okay. And just keep, trying to keep a scorecard here. And then who would like to be next up? Councilmember Healy?
Yeah, I'm fine with 3 plus 3. And I like the suggestion about looking at the, not the parcel, but actually the rented premises for looking at setback distances.
We have concerns about our ability to do that accurately, and I don't think we have big parcels, but.
Well, you have some big parcels. Kettleman's was mentioned. That's a huge parcel. So just find a way to make it work. That's not a big lift. It really isn't. And I'm fine with the commercial properties, and I agree with bringing back out ahead-of-charge these things, although I'm inclined to agree with staff on this one.
Thank you.
So I'm worried about having enough clarity that we don't have to actually come back to you with details. And maybe that's best. But, you know, because I've worked out a solution for the buffers.
We should hear that, yeah. Tell, maybe this is a good moment to hear that.
Do you want to do that now?
Right now.
So in footnote 16 to the permitted use table, right now it says, "Use must be at least 600 feet from a school, childcare center, 200 feet from parks and centers, or a library, and 100 feet from residential districts, as measured from property line to property line." And we could add, "Use must be at least 600 feet from a public or private school, or childcare center, blah, 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 as measured from property line." I understand, my councilmember Healy's raising that issue, and we can talk about it. And then to add at the end, "At the time of granting of the initial commercial cannabis permit." So that way, another use couldn't come in and divice them when it comes time for them to renew. So we could do those two things, and that addresses that problem, because that's where that really resides. And that would be in lieu of, like, a CUP that runs with the property.
But why can't you just say the leased premises rather than the parcel? If the leased premises are less than the parcel?
I think we need more definitions than that might, because it's, it's, it could be the land. It could be just the building and, like, commercial condos. And I get your point, but I'm worried, I think we might have to come back with that language so it really works. I'm not trying to stall.
I'm solidly in this camp, and with these days of GIS and aerial photo for every property we have, seems a doable thing.
Right, but we still have to articulate it. I don't know if it's, it's a little late, so I'm tired too. But if you mean, I mean, the purpose of these is to provide literally a buffer from, like, mostly it's kids, right? It's mostly kids. From places where they are to a place where commercial cannabis activity is occurring. And it's true that that's really, you know, it's largely in the store, right? Not necessarily the parking lot, especially if it's a larger area. So I guess.
And that's not something you can map this evening. That's not something we can analyze this evening, the impact of that change.
It's hard, it's hard for me to have a good solution for you right now, and I want to have good solutions for you, but I respect that you're, you know.
Do we have to map it? Like, do we have to map where they're allowed to be, or can we say within 500 feet from the leased premises?
That'll be really ambiguous, because what's.
It feels pretty straightforward if someone brings, like, forward something.
What do other cities do? What do other cities do? I mean, they seem to be moving forward and getting these things passed, and businesses are thriving, and we are stuck. And I don't know why we are so stuck and can't move on this.
Is this, we're just going to have a little discussion up here. Is this something we want to, you know, hang on this evening? Or can we suggest that this is an amendable thing in the next two months while we're still cultivating the rest of this? Have a revised ordinance?
The reason why the clarity is so desirable, and we really strive for that in all our regulations, but especially when we anticipate that decisions might be contested, is because we don't get bogged down in litigation or questions. And so, and we are able to have clear results with the decision, and it's transparent to the applicants, because people can decide. And maybe this isn't the sweet spot, but that's why, so, because if we just say, "From the premises," well, what is that? Is that the leased premises? And usually, that means the land. I think what I'm hearing people talk about is, like, the four corners of the building. And we can probably come up with a definition for that, and that could be your direction.
But then I'm also wondering, too, what would we measure to then on the sensitive receptor or on the buffered property? Because when we think about, say, a single-family residential use, and they use their backyard, do we only measure to the house, or do we measure?
It'd be amenable to leaving the other side of the buffer as is.
And I think we should, because.
You're talking about being in a big shopping center. A big business park, you know, where you rent a small portion of it. We're only focused on one end of it.
Right, right, sure. So, in other words, calculate from the building of the cannabis establishment and leave the other definition of a parcel?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Where were we? Where you were wrapping, you got, then.
Three and two.
Councilmember Posake.
Numbers three and two, add C1 and C2. What else?
Any other restrictions you wanted or heard in the evening? No other restrictions?
One of the speakers suggested following state operating hours. I think that might be worth considering, if anyone else thinks so, but I don't, I wouldn't push for that.
And what are the existing business hours that we're talking about in this ordinance?
Right now, they're in the regulations. It's 8 to 8.
And the state is 6 to 10, is it? 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay.
I don't know. That could be so.
That's what we said.
We're going next up. Who's next up? Thank you. Vice Mayor?
So, right now, we still could end up with a total of four retails and three deliveries at this time, given that we have one right outside of our city limits. But the suggestion earlier that they need to be buffered from each other so that we end up with, for sure, three locations that are distant from each other, I think was a good suggestion on that. And I'd go with the C1 and C2s that were on the map, not all C1, C2s, but just the ones that were demonstrated on the map, which were most appropriate. So very limited locations. So I'd go with that.
What limits it is the buffers. There'd be a lot more if it weren't for the buffers.
Yeah, right. Also, I would go from the parcel of the schools, the actual parcel line, but to the actual whatever. Instead of, building is also hard to define, because you don't know what's inside the building, or how big the buildings, or how much it's shared. But I would go to the, whatever door of the retail. If there's a door of the retail, to the closest door of the retail. So it's a physical door of entry, is identifiable as a specific location. So compared to the corner of the building, the building is not sure, because it could be a larger shopping center building. But if it's just to the door.
I think we're talking about the corner of the building that they rent.
Right.
Not the whole of the building that they might be part of.
Right, the building that they rent.
So that's where we were having, the others were all settling on.
So a little bit more specific, right. Something like that. And so I would still favor that if we do go with the 3 plus 2 and have that allowable, but by putting the buffer, distance buffer between them, whether or not we want to do that just for the retail, or also include deliveries on that. So we have to maybe separate those two out from that particular requirement. If we were to buffer the retail, those one mile between each, we have close to four or five. close to four or five miles north to south, so to get a, get three, three retails, so one mile buffer minimum between the three, between each one, each retail, uh, might be appropriate, so we have max size.
Any other, any other items?
Um, and that's it.
Okay. And, uh, Councilmember Kater Thompson? All good? Then, you're, um-
Well, I, I, actually, the timeframe, I'd be willing to change.
Hours?
The hours.
Of operation?
Uh, hours of operation.
So, you're good with the commercial one and two?
Yes. Um, well, sure.
And you understand this?
And I will say that this map is, is really, to me, problematic, but this is where we're at.
Let me see if I can recap, and then I know you got, okay, and, and Councilmember Healy?
Yeah, I was gonna ask staff, as, as a possible alternative to, um, what, uh, Councilmember Shrib's mentioned, is, is a distance buffer, some kind of a minimum, if, rather than doing that, if in the selection of the people who get the three licenses, the, the distance apart from each other could be a factor to be considered, and, as opposed to us imposing a, a hard distance. It's just a question.
That could be, that, we could do that. It could be part of the selection criteria.
Yeah. Okay.
To try, it could be something to the effect of, um, some kind of broad distribution of locations within the city, taking, taking proximity to other establishments into account.
Is it anticipated that you will do this, like, a, a public bidding, or an RFP on architecture and things, where you make a call for, all submissions due by day? A decision on the three licenses likely at the same moment?
Not the same, so what will happen is-
In the same process?
We'd be soliciting the submissions of, expressions of interest, and submission of the required materials, and we say what those are, um, we describe the process, 'cause very much like, um, uh, like in the bidding context, in terms of the law, we, we have control over our rules, but we have to follow them, and if we don't follow them, that's when we're susceptible to challenges due, so we'd have to state clearly what those are, um, and then, and then we'd make that decision, and issue, you know, being noticed.
I'm just thinking, it's one kind of animal, if, uh, you know, an applicant comes in, and you go, hey, good, great, you're done, but it's another kind of animal, if you get all the potentials for this first round in at the same time.
Well, so, and, and we anticipate that, that would happen, because-
So, you will not evaluate until the closing date, and then you'll evaluate who's ever on the table as of that closing date?
Right, and, and that's what we did before.
Okay.
And, and we're anticipating that there'll be enough interest, um, but it may not be, or there may not be enough qual, qualified applicants, and so there might be only one or two, but, but what that would still leave the possibility as exists right now, with respect to, uh, delivery only, for another applicant to come in at any time during the year.
So, in, if, if I got my math right, and I know you'll wanna, um, add to whatever you think the ambiguities are, or council direction is, uh, I think every, there's broad consensus to add, uh, the commercial zones.
Right.
Okay? Um, I think everybody's understanding is, it's written as a three plus two. Um, I think everyone is interested in the parcel, or premise versus parcel.
Yeah, and I, the, I'm sorry, but the door thing, we will not be able to do, but we can do the perimeter of a leased space, or owned space?
Yes, I think we all, the majority were in the, in that space.
Okay.
Good, good clarity, thank you. We had, um, a conversation about hours, um, and, and I, I heard three votes for the, four votes for the, um, the hours to be to eight, eight, we're at eight now? And so, what were you-
We're at eight, eight AM to eight PM right now.
And, and is there, is there a consensus that needs to be more than that, or eight to eight is sufficient?
Six to ten. If the speaker says six to ten, it's the state.
If you wanna direct us to harmonize with the state, we can, I haven't confirmed what that is, but we can.
That was a consensus I did here, up here, um, and, um-
And Eric, I can, I can confirm that, so cannabis state regulation is six AM to ten PM, final transaction must be completed by ten PM.
By ten?
Ten PM, yes.
Is there a starting time?
Six AM.
Oh, it is six?
Yeah, so that would be in compliance with the state regulations.
Okay. Thank you, thanks, Brian.
Thank you very much. And then, um, the question is, shall we, um, buffer between facilities, or have an intentional distribution? And then, and here, how we're gonna end on that one, and, and I think the last place we were is, some sort of intentional distribution, is that a planning term? Can you do intentional distribution in this?
So, what's, um, obviously, uh, uh, another, adding another buffer to the zoning ordinance is very clear, so it's unambiguous, that's good, but it could be, we don't know what the applicants are, who, we don't know who they're necessarily be, or what properties are gonna be focused on, and so that might be an, it might be undesirably restrictive to, to set it that way, and we have more flexibility if we take it into account as a factor when they're being, when they're being scored. So, to me, those are the upsides and downsides, we can do either one.
Council preference here, somebody's gotta weigh in. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, uh, one of, one of the concepts is also to protect the two businesses we already have in play, so that we have a delivery in play right now, and also one that's close to the city limits, so a buffer to that, so protect that business, in case they're, they're not one of the three i- in the end, um, so I would like to propose that, as, so at least we need to buffer from current also, so some form of buffer.
Would we, um, buffer between, it seems to me our delivery and our out-of-town are somewhat close? Would we want to say that the delivery can't move to retail, because they're too close, the other?
No, no, I'm saying, um, that, uh, the three retails, um, need to also include the one that's right outside of town, uh, the buffer needs to include that one.
Right, but I would suggest that the, the buffer allows the distribution one to convert to distribution, I mean, it's-
Yeah.
Delivery, delivery and retail.
They can be both, yes.
Even, even though they're closer than maybe some buffer you set?
Uh, yes, so I'm not, I'm just for the three retails, what I'm talking about. Uh, deliveries is gonna, can be probably anywhere, so their deliveries are very different.
But if a delivery expands its service at its existing property, and wants to get into retail at its existing-
That'd be fine.
So, it, the buffer does not apply?
Correct, between the two, between the delivery, just between the three retail.
Are we, um, Councilmember Healy?
Yeah, I, I just don't think a buffer's workable, and, and I would prefer to see it be a factor considered in, in selecting, um, the businesses that get them, and, and partly because if you have two businesses that are, you know, half a mile apart, well, which one is buffered out, and which one get, takes priority, if we're trying to do them all at the same time? It, it, it's just unworkable.
We've also never done, then, anything, I don't think, where we've had a buffer from uses that we don't regulate outside of jurisdiction, but, but I think that could be factored into, um, a, a little bit more discretionary distribution consideration and-
I, I like the idea of having it in your selection, administrative staff discretion.
And, 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 and just so that we under, again, just 'cause we wanna understand, 'cause our, our whole job is to implement your direction, um, the concern is, is a business concern, its adjacency to another business concern, recognizing that one concern might have delivery and onsite happening at the same concern, is that, is that, am I understanding that right? 'Cause, 'cause currently, what we've presented to you anticipates that a concern that's, say, doing delivery now, may wanna add, um, onsite retail to the same location, or one may wanna come in and do both, since we still have one available spot for delivery only.
We don't wanna preclude any existing business from, um, suffering, even though it expands to a slightly different delivery to retail.
Okay.
We don't wanna prohibit a new person from operating a dual new business.
So, my understanding is right, okay, good, good, thank, so, so the consideration of, uh, distribution is, is business to business, not type of cannabis business?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I think Councilmember Barnacle had it.
I just think that one of the main reasons we're doing this is economic development, and so as you're looking at the applications, we should be looking for the suite of applications that are going to, like, that, where we have good, solid operators, and are going to generate a lot of revenue for our city, because we want people to have thriving businesses, and we also want the city to be, you know, filling its coffers with as much income as we can get from this change, right? That's the return here.
Well, and, and it's 'cause of those considerations, that this has been administered, and, and I expect will continue to largely be administered in the Economic Development Department, because they have those connections with the business community, and they're the best at assessing business plans, their likelihood to succeed, et cetera.
Exactly, and the, I wouldn't expect our Economic Development Department to pick three operators that are located within a couple feet of each other, or three operators in the same business park. I would expect our Economic Development Department to pick three operators, there are three proposals that are gonna generate the most economic value for the city.
Right, but, but it's still helpful to have this clarification, but yes.
My goodness, that was a lot of deliberation. Are you feeling good about modifications that needed in, in your department? Good?
I think so.
And I, I think we're up to, um, a voting round here, right? I'm, I'm short of a motion, but, so, did you wanna make a motion? Who would like to, um, Councilmember Posake?
Um, I'll make a motion with the amendments, or, or, or the adjustments that you, you just summarized, um-
Okay, thank you very much. And-
Second.
And a second from Barnacle, thank you very much, and, um, a roll call vote, please.
Barnacle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Posake?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
McDonough?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And, and I'm, just, I just wanna summarize for the record, so we're clear, so, that's with, um, revising the buffers to, to, so that, uh, school can come in and, and make a use non-conforming, it's harmonizing hours of operation with state law, it's adding C1 and C2, it's making distribution in the city a consideration in the, in the award decision, in view of, um, success of the businesses and economic productivity, um, it's changing the, um, buffer, um, determination to be from the parcel boundaries of the quote-unquote "sensitive receptor" use to the perimeter of the leased or owned space of the business, um, three and two, as is presented, um, and the rest as is presented. Am I missing anything?
Coming back on fee at some point.
Oh, thank you, yes, yes. With, with the rest of this package reflecting your direction.
And harmonizing hours of operation with-
That I got, yes, you did get that, okay. Six to ten.
Wonderful, thank you so much, that was, like, one of the heavier lifts we've done in a while, so, um, appreciate everybody's patience and staying with us to such a late hour, and with that, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.